Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, December 10, 2019, now called to order at 7:00 PM. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local access programming. Is there anyone in the audience that's recording tonight's meeting? If there being none, please rise and join us. Let's move forward.
.......................................
At this time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, each of the planning board members, to please refrain from asking questions in regard to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. So we're going to do the decisions first.
Three decisions. Last one. There was also a typo in previous decision. I just forgot to leave a line. Yeah, the board could go vote to just strike that line from this decision or help all in real.
I'll make a motion to strike the line from the decision...
711 South.
711 South. I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
..........................................................................................
If anyone is here for Impact Fitness requesting modification of an existing site plan, that hearing has been continued to, what is it, January 14? January 14. Also, SZLL Realty definitive subdivision plan for 13 lot single home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street in 19 Etnav. That one's being continued as also. And the Mossad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval has also been continued to January. So if anybody's here for those hearings, they're not going to happen tonight. Is anything else?
No, I just want a motion to continue those hearings.
I'll make a motion to continue those three hearings.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. It seems like you can go through my update if you like.
Sure.
Internally, we've worked on several zoning changes, whole zoning changes through spring town meeting. At last count, there were six. I'd like to start bringing them to the board next month just to kind of get your feedback, start the process a little earlier than we did last time. Some are quite large, some are minor proposed changes, but...
And how many in total? Six, you said?
Six at last count.
Six.
Hopefully, that's it, but who knows?
Now, can you email those to us with your packet?
Yeah. At this point, they're all drafts. They'll be vetted by this board, they'll be vetted by zoning by law review committee, which is meeting next week. The economic development committee has already weighed in and they don't have any problems with it.
Great.
They're meeting internally to discuss it, so hopefully, the changes will be met with approval down the line.
All right. Good. Let's start the hearing.
The big proposed zoning change is table use table, kind of a rewrite.
Mm-hmm.
The old table uses and the definitions, kind of modernizing a lot of the definitions, adding new definitions. Some of the definition were kind of mushed together, it didn't make sense them being lumped together, just a full rewrite. So that's really the big one.
Are there any, I don't know, changes in regard to like getting some more density and that kind of thing down?
Yeah, one of the proposed changes is the height restrictions currently. Thirty-five feet is the maximum in certain districts, now the district is 25. The thought is increase it to 50 feet in certain districts with a special permit, so they still kind of have some protection with the special permit, but would allow it instead of trying to get a variance, which may have not, you'll get variances, not, it's not guaranteed for variance.
Great. All right, 75. Applicant Molly Zelli requesting special permit under Section 3.2.2.5 of the Auburn zoning by law for combined business and dwelling and property located at 325 Southridge Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 33, parcel 75. Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your project.
Yep, Molly Zelli, property owner, 325 Southridge Street. Want to introduce yourself?
I'm Adele Reynolds, I'm just helping to go through the process and doing the drawings and again, helping through the process.
All right.
So we're asking for a special permit for a second floor apartment in one of the buildings there. We have, in the past, had a hairdresser renting there. Now it's been vacant for over a year. It's a little bit difficult to rent the second floor with no elevator access.
Sure.
So we thought, especially with the Drury Square project that's going, that this possibly might be a solution for us.
I think it fits in well with the vision for the area. And so you're going to dormer part of the roof and create an apartment on the second floor, two bedrooms, I understand?
That's the whole, yep.
I know in your pa- I'm sorry, I know in your packets you have a small version, but I did bring a big version that helps.
Oh, sure.
You have one, so you want to do it that side and they can look at this one on the side?
Sure.
Sorry? Tried to get it over there. So there's an existing dormer on the back side already. On the front side, we're looking to dormer it so that the bedroom that they're adding can get the windows and the ventilation and otherwise they wouldn't be able to do anything. But we're not changing the footprint of the bottom or any of them on the site plan, which is why we asked for the site plan review waiver. But again, on the plans, you'll see that there is a dormer on the front being added.
Yeah, being a hairdresser, there was already two bathrooms and quite a bit of plumbing available, so it makes sense.
Yeah. Did you have any, anything to add to that?
All right, kind of fits the new district that kind of developed, a walkable downtown type district. Don't have any issues with it.
And there's plenty of parking there and that won't affect the business or...
Yeah, I think residential, even the two bedroom, would have less of a parking pressure than the hairdressers always had, eight or 10 cars.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I did on the site plan, I gave out the mortgage survey, but when I asked for the site plan review, but I did give the mortgage survey showing, and I kind of calculated, because right now on the bottom floor, they have the florist, and is it a travel?
Travel agency.
Agency. So I calculated the parking places per Auburn zoning and then showed the other four upstairs, and so we have plenty over there.
Steve, did you have any questions?
No, I didn't.
Nick?
No, I'm good.
Cut and dried.
Just one.
Okay.
Access and egress, is the access and egress the apartment off of the interior or is it exterior access and egress?
The front, what I would consider the front door is an exterior staircase with an overhang, and what would probably be the back egress on the other end of the building is enclosed, it's indoors.
So is that part of Auburn florist or the travel agency? It was like a hallway where everybody comes to come and all this?
The rear egress is in common, the front egress would be solely used by the tenant.
Yeah, so this right here, let's see, this is the salon, so anyways, yeah. So if you look at this one right here from the living room, this right here, the door goes out, stairway goes out, and this goes right down to that parking lot.
Is that in the rear of the building?
The rear of the building, yep. And then this right here is on the opposite side of the building, again, the rear, but it comes up, there's a door down here at the bottom, and you go in and you can come up and go into here. There's one in the florist, in the very bottom, but the one in the florist, the florist has front and they have other egresses.
They have their own doors.
Yep, absolutely.
And the same with the travel agency?
Yep. Sorry, yes. Yep. Sorry.
I got it.
Okay.
I don't have any problem.
Any comment from the public? Make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the special permit and waivers of, what was it, what do you... There's nothing happening on the exterior of the building, so site photography, site lighting, landscape plan, site plan and proposed system of drainage. So motion for the waivers first, please.
I'll make the motion to approve all the waivers requested.
Do you have a second on that?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and a motion for the special permit.
I'll make the motion for the special permit.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is the vote?
Thank you.
Good luck.
So you'll send...
Send the decision.
Okay. Yep. Okay, but I can get stuff ready to submit, so... Okay, thank you. Have a good night, good luck with the rest of you.
Thank you. EverSource requesting site plan approval under 3.2.4.0 of the Auburn zoning by law for public, private utility facility and property located at 7, 8, 10, and 12 West Tech Drive, Auburn, Mass. Map 27, parcels 20, 21, 23, and 24. Good evening, please introduce yourself.
Sure. Madam Chair, Attorney Todd Broder from Fletcher-Tilton. Here with me tonight, I do have a bit of a team, so I'll introduce Katie Gagnon, who's sitting here to my right, who's the civil engineer on the project from Langin. And also with us tonight, Ron Miller, who's the architect. Well, we might have people speak sporadically, but I'll have them reintroduce themselves, just so you know, who's here. Dave Verone's from Cushman and Wakefield, he's the project manager, outside project manager on this one, from EverSource. Armando Pereira's here, he's the manager of the real estate department. Is Jason here?
Jason.
Jason's here. And Jason Plumb, who's manager of Real Estate Capital Projects. So we've got some expertise to help answer any questions that may come up. Predominantly, Katie's going to provide you with an overview of the site plan, but just to give you a little bit of background, we're here for site plan approval on this project. This is up at the top of West Tech Drive. It's a campus that'll be four lots that will assemble together. Three of the lots were recently purchased and are owned by a company called Rocky River Realty Company, which is a holding company for EnStar Gas and Electric Company. So the occupant at the site will be EverSource. There'll be some work, which Katie will describe here, but it's utilization of the old FedEx facility, which closed down some time ago now, and utilization of three parcels, which have really, really not been developed before. So a good thing for West Tech Drive, three owned parcels and one leased parcel, which we can point out, and it's 12 West Tech, which is furthest around the cul-de-sac, which will be a leased parcel, subject to, you know, an option to buy it at some point, which is likely to happen, but the seller wasn't ready to sell yet, so she was willing to lease. So it's under the control of EverSource. So what we're proposing is a new gas operations service center facility, which I've been speaking with Caleb, he's couched as a public utility company, so it's allowed use in the industrial park, just subject to site plan approval. So just a couple of additional highlights that I thought would be important for you to hear. Now, this facility would service the greater Auburn/Wooster area, it's kind of a regional spot, services over 70,000 customers, and it'll be a centralized location for both some office staff training and training facilities, storage, warehouses, a lot of things that'll happen there, which we'll describe. About 100 full-time employees at the location and 60 to 100 trainees or instructors on any given, at any given time, will be using the facility, potentially on a daily basis. So, Katie, you want to say? Oh, yeah. Just to highlight, in case we forget, we did go through the peer review process with Graves Engineering. They had provided us a letter over the weekend, actually, Jeff Walsh must have been working steadily over the weekend, but provided it to us on Sunday. Katie and her team from Langin provided responses and some modifications to the plans to address those questions. Jeff was kind enough to issue an additional review letter today, which I would classify as, you know, a clean review letter, which addressed all the comments that he initially made in his initial letter. So, you know, I don't think he has any open items, but we certainly will hear from you and anybody else that has questions, we'll try to address those issues tonight if we can.
Okay.
Thanks, Katie.
Powerpoint.
So, you don't mind if I stand?
No.
Okay. So as noted, it's the four parcels at the end of West Tech, Mass Pike, and I think for north's a little off, but if you refer to north up, that kind of makes it easier to talk about. So sort of the existing site plan, these two sites are basically undeveloped, this one is an existing sort of material storage yard, which actually is the proposed use. So just to give you a sense of the existing use, proposed site plan, so as noted, we're developing across the four parcels, we're maintaining most of the existing building, that little small portion out of the front is being demolished and we're putting in a new addition. In terms of the building, I'll let Ron talk about that later, but basically, existing building to remain, we're redoing the front parking lot and adding another driveway out on the east side to help with circulation through the site. So the whole parcel will be fenced in with gates to limit access into the material storage yard behind the building and then into the training area. So it's sort of one-way access around the building, so this driveway allows trucks, et cetera, to get out. Public parking is essentially in the front, employee fleet vehicles, delivery trucks, et cetera, would all access the back of the building. I have some pictures on the next slide, but just to talk through it quick, this is eight West Tech, it's proposed to be a material pole and pipe storage yard, similar, like I said, to today's building. And then seven and 12 West Tech are the pole training yard and Leek Street, and I understand you're probably not super familiar with that, so looking at some sample photos, this is the material storage and pipe storage that EverSource has at their New Bedford facility, which is a similar type building to this. This is an aerial of another Leek Street and pole stor- or pole training area that we did in their Connecticut facility. The Leek Street is basically like little Home Depot prefab sheds, it's so they can go practice gas...
Surfrising.
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 So little fake houses, neighborhood, and then the pole training area, which are shorter poles that they can learn to work on. So that's kind of, this is the pole training and the Leek Street, sort of from that angle at that same facility.
Okay.
We go back. We're complying with your landscape regulations in terms of tree counts, location of trees, combination of shade and ornamental trees with a native adaptive evergreen screen along the edge of the training yard, which does sort of get closer to the residential uses over there. As noted, the site is, the use is compliant, and we are in a few different zones, but we do comply with all of the bulk requirements. In terms of parking, 218 parking spaces where required, we're providing 218 over the two sort of uses with the ADA spaces scattered throughout, and all of our work is outside the 100-foot wetland buffer. We did do a brief traffic analysis, and we don't believe that this will have any significant impact in the net increase of trips and the weekday evening peak hour did increase slightly, but anything under 100 is considered just negligible background traffic. So sort of site plan, should I just keep going?
Sure.
Grading, we are really not touching anything in this parcel, and there's the existing pole line here, so we're not doing any work within that easement area or southwest of it, just grading out this berm area here in that parcel, and really, that's it. In the building parcel, we are regrading in the parking lot to sort of improve circulation because we added this driveway, and then some slight upgrading around the building because of new overhead doors for vehicles to get in, but really, other than that, not much there. Oh, I have a mouse. Do I block or allow?
Allows.
And then through the pole storage, or I'm sorry, pole training area, 5 to 10% slopes to try to limit the disturbance as much as possible. We do have two retaining walls proposed, we need 13, up to 13 feet, and this one's up to 15 feet, but we've tried to grade out the rest to just sort of have fewer retaining Proposed soil erosion and sediment control measures are shown here, but related to this would be silt fence, back with hay bales if needed, inlet protection, erosion control blankets on steep slopes, and that was all identified in our plans as well as in the stormwater management report. In terms of proposed drainage, we're maintaining the same drainage patterns across the site. These two water sheds really aren't changing at all. This one does go out to the street, but like I said, we're not really modifying any of the ground cover over there. This parcel today grades into this, or drains into this existing stormwater management basin, we're maintaining that, we are proposing to reuse the basin, we're actually decreasing the amount of previous coverage on this parcel, so it still works. And then this parcel here just overlaying flows, we do have a small little pond here to help mitigate some of the peak flows. So we are matching or reducing flows as required for the two 10 and 100-year storm. We do have some water quality measures that we've proposed, including new water quality units, a maintenance plan, catch basins with sumps, and our, everything was designed in accordance with the MAD deep stormwater handbook and the erosion control guidelines. We do have all new utilities to the building, including gas, and then there is some limited utility work on this parcel as well. And then just real quick, site lighting, we are proposing new lights across the site, zoning compliant LED full cutoff along the building, it's predominantly building mounted, but we do have some 22-foot high poles scattered throughout the parcel.
Good evening, my name is Ron Miller, I represent CHG, the CHK Architects. What you see is our proposed plan for the area. The purple area is the electrical training, the orange area is the gas training, the yellow area is basically the common areas of circulation and some of the common function of the building. These are basically restrooms and locker rooms to serve the operations people, gas operations people, warehouse for the material storage for all the parts and pieces for the gas meters and so on. Incoming stock is, again, other parts storage. This is a fleet, this is basically a repair garage for their vehicles. What you see them do is they're pretty much the circulation area for all their sprint vehicles that go on and service all the meters. What you see here is in a sort of severe weather conditions, snow and so on, they'd be parking their vehicles inside so that minimize clearing of the snow every morning or so. During the day, most of the vehicles are up and about, so what they do is they come in, get the parts, go back out, service, and it's kind of that routine. This is the second floor that sits above this, we have two staircases and elevator that service the second floor. Pretty much all the second floor function is the business use of the EverSource group here, mostly workstations, and we have some meeting rooms and also some offices. And that's basically just it. Oh, yeah. Elevation wise, we have pretty much, the warehouse is, we're looking to keep the existing footprint of the warehouse, all we're looking to do is basically reskin it and re-roof it. We're actually keeping the existing roof, but we adding to the more insulation on top to make it more efficient building. And the exterior we're removing basically is just a metal panel system, we're introducing a four-inch metal panel system that's insulated for more efficiency, more R value. So we're trying to make this building more efficient. We're also adding this addition here, again, that's all insulated metal panel system, very light in white in color, and pretty much, again, we're trying to come up with some super insulated products so that we're trying to make this building really high efficient building. We're looking at for the warehouse, I think we're looking at R30 on the roof and R26 on the walls, and additions, we are looking at potentially going with the R30 on the walls and R50 on the roof to make it really super efficient building. And what you see here is the existing warehouse portion, these are the additions, that's the front elevation, the front entrance. We have two stories here, we've got a single level here where we have the training, we got high ceilings in there to allow them to use it for multiple use. On the side, you can see here, we wrap around, we have some overhead doors, we've got to put all new overhead doors, we're completely replacing all of them, take it, again, make it more high efficient building. Any questions?
So on the, I think it was gate, West Tech, can you outline where the fence is going to be?
Pretty much all the property is going to have a fence line. They want to make sure that, you know, public doesn't stray into this area. This site, we have basically a gated entrance here, this whole area's got a fence line, we have a gate here that goes to the easement area. This, we have two gates here, in and out, incoming, outgoing, and this whole area is fenced in, as well as this whole footprint of this training yard is fenced in with a gated, car access gated entrances.
Okay. I had another question, so training facility, gas, I'm assuming you're using gas in the training, is gas let-off?
They don't use it in the training, right?
They don't.
They probably use compressor.
Yes, we mostly use compressor in the building. There is some gas, but it's kind of like, you know, school has a chem lab, little nozzles here and there, if they needed to have some live gas, they actually use very minimal. The Leek Street, we call it Leek Street, it's a representation of a street area where they train people how to work on houses and so on. They will have some gas to show them how to work on gas meters and so on, but most of the equipment is operated on compressor air system.
And then what type of equipment are, is going to be in the yard, are you like heavy machinery?
Moving in the area?
Yeah, so outside the building, are you?
Outside the building, there's really not heavy machinery, it's mostly sprint vehicles that basically services your everyday meter.
Okay, so not in the training yard or anything like?
Training yard, you will have the utility vehicles for the pole training, you see those utility vehicles with the buckets? They will be here in occasions when they do training for the pole training, for the new trainer, as they come in.
And you'll have back for digging.
Okay.
Don't worry, because West Tech is down that way.
Oh, so like a typical training schedule, like, so you set 100 full-time employees and then you'll have some people coming in for training, Monday through Friday, normal business hours, all that training, the machinery and whatever's going on in the back area that ceases on weekends?
Yes.
So when we met with DCG, we also talked about this a lot in terms of the hours of operation, and the feedback from the company was that folks get there sometime in the morning, maybe 7 o'clock, they're out on their, they get loaded up, they get out on their trucks, maybe by 8 or so, 8:30, and they're generally coming back 3:30, 4 o'clock timeframe. The training on site probably falls somewhere between that and that. The training on site probably falls somewhere between that.
FedEx was up there, I think they were 24/7 up there. Out of curiosity, I would assume that you'd have to give my ignorance, but I'm assuming you have to do some type of training at night because you're going to get things that happen at night that have to be addressed. No?
There's also an apprentice training. So this is the initial training, and then afterwards they go through an apprentice program where they're more seasoned, you know, work breaks. That's where they get their night experience, winter.
Yeah, all those conditions. I just assumed if you're going to build a whole street, you might as well do it at dark and see what happens.
Right, no, for sure. Folks will come here very green.
Okay.
So I'm okay with my questions now, but I would like to see the Graves report before we vote.
Yeah, well, we haven't seen any of that, so, yeah.
Through the chair, how close is the closest residence, the actual house?
I thought we would just kind of figure out.
You can see here.
And then, I mean, in terms of development, it's just up there. In fact, it's probably easier to see if we go back to, can you escape?
The site where the FedEx building is backed up essentially to the turnpike, the Mass Bike.
Yeah.
So does the old Lorenzo site, which is the storage site that we're talking about.
And then you have your, you know, the dealerships that's there. Closest residential area is back here. So there is a pretty substantial buffer between the buildings.
Between the two.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that buffer would stay there then, at that point?
Yeah. Get out of that, it's going to.
He's going to be on the plans.
Right, we're maintaining all the vegetation outside, and like I said, we are beefing up and proposing a screening along that.
And it's fenced in anyway, right?
Yeah.
So that first structure closest to Pin Rock Road?
Right there.
That can be seen on your next plane, correct?
I think so, yeah.
That's that.
Okay, that's right there. So then what, your training yard is going to go in this way?
Yeah, so it's like.
You'll be in this corner here.
So it is a lot closer than?
Yeah.
But, I mean, we do continue the screening around the corner and, but, yes.
What's the elevation change there?
So the garage is probably at like 435 and we're at almost 500, so.
Significant.
I mean, the screening is higher though, so you would still look up that.
That was my only question.
Okay, Scott?
I think it looks like a good project. The Maravista is close. If there's good screening there, I mean, same thing as we did for Lundgren, who's also in butter. We just require the standard screening, so that'd be my only concern. Otherwise, it looks fine.
And you're proposing?
Just keep in mind that operations on this area, it's not going to be all the time. There's not going to be people there all the time.
Exactly.
And the screening is fence and greenery, so I think it'd double.
Well, and it is pretty, there is dense vegetation there today too, so.
And in all of our locations, we make every effort to be accommodating to our neighbors. Certainly if there is an issue, we'll look to work with our butters.
And you said 100 employees?
Full-time and then, and then up to 100 additional people.
That'll be coming on and off the property, training, picking up vehicles?
Right.
That kind of thing, okay.
Yeah, you saw from the color-coded floor plans, it's sort of different divisions and there's an office component, which is more customer service type, you know, type folks that would be there.
Yeah, because you did mention customers, so there would be customers going there, what, to pay bills or?
No.
No, none of that?
No.
Okay, so it's not a customer service. You said customers, but I, so, yeah.
It was a listen to the parking, I think. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, public, in that anybody could, that part's not secure.
Okay.
So like if you're training, you may not have like key card access behind the building.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Through the chair, I have one more question. On the right side, does that back parking lot connect to the, no, to the main building? Yeah, right there. That connects right through?
This, what do you mean connects right through?
It's.
Yeah, the driveway continues.
There's not like a fence blocking one part?
Well, there's a gate out here.
Yeah. The traffic flow will be coming in. They wanted one-way flow so that it minimizes, you know, any uncertainty, safety and so on. So what they're doing is coming in gated, get into the facility, gate out, and so on. So both areas in and out is gated.
So fire trucks could get all the way through as well?
Yes, absolutely.
And I didn't point out, but there is pedestrian access also we have.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, yeah, okay. So it's a park that you just have to drive right around the back and then park in the front?
Well, the front parking lot, you can get, you can circulate entirely in the front.
Yeah.
Can't see that from there?
I was like, seems like a laborer way to drive around the building.
And you've been with DCG?
We went to DCG, yeah, probably back in the fall.
Fire department's okay with the access and?
Yeah, I mean, this isn't existing building. We're adding on the front and making the full circulation around the building better than how we ever was.
Yeah, right now, it's basically, this is the only incoming and upcoming traffic here, so we're trying to maintain one flow, so it's kind of, for safety wise, we're kind of concerned at having all the vehicles trying to exit the same way coming in.
And we did provide the fire truck movement on our.
Awesome, Scott? John, your room?
First question, this, I saw maintenance bag.
Yes.
The architect, was there a floor drain in there?
Yes, and we are proposing a new oil-water separator into this sewer system.
Okay. And then, I can't read your third page of your.
I won't can read that. The details.
Uh-oh.
Your, uh, this.
Still not sure.
I think, I think.
Oh, oh, oh.
Your fencing details and so on.
That's what I got.
Oh.
Figure we'll review that. But then you get into, on your bollards?
Mm-hmm.
You say they're painted, but they should, and you don't really give a color, it just says painted. They should be painted safety yellow with reflectorized stripes.
Yes. Ever source user maintains, you know, the safety yellow all the time.
Yeah, but if it doesn't say on the plan.
Well, we do note that the color shall be provided to the owner and architect for approval as part of, but we can clarify that.
Safety yellow.
Yes.
Bollards, safety yellow with reflectorized stripes. And then on your by two minutes concrete pavement section?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that says 6 inches below the pavement. That's on the top of page CS 501.
Six inches of the aggregate base?
It's got to be 12.
For standard duty?
That's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's standard in the industry, 12 inches below any paved surface, even your own driveway. And then on page CS 502, I was just curious as to what the, the poles were on either side of the gate. You can really give a size. It says nominal 2-inch OD. And that, you're like corner posts, they're carrying the weight of the fence, those are usually larger than 2-inch. I don't know what size your fence posts are, so.
I don't, I would have to confirm what our spec says.
Okay.
What size do you prefer?
I don't prefer anything.
I mean, I think it's going to be whatever.
That you recommend.
Yeah.
And then your, you show a detail on CG 501 for your storm pipe petting.
Mm-hmm.
You don't really say what kind of storm pipe you're using.
Well, we call out our pipe types on our grading plant, on our drainage, and they're all HDP.
So when that marries up to a drainage manhole, how do you make the connection?
With the con seal.
No, that's the manhole. That's the manhole, use con seal. I hear it's con sealed with the pipe going into the manhole.
I wonder about you.
It doubles in the details, so.
No one has ever asked me what product we use at the manhole before, so I have to brush it up on my.
Never met me before.
I haven't, keeping me on my toes.
And CU 101, new drain line? I think it's drain line, maybe it's sewer, sewer line. You propose a doghouse manhole, but you don't show what kind of pipe that's going over where the pipe is.
Oh, I think you just can't see the pipe.
I can see all the other pipe, but I don't see the pipe where that's going. Not on the plan at all.
It is, I think it's just, we probably can't read it on your.
He ties it to existing, yeah.
Yeah, but we.
Yeah, that line is very faint.
I trust you that you can't.
It's back in that light, light gray again.
Yeah.
I don't see it at all. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah, but we did shoot it out there, so I appreciate that you can't see it, but it is there.
Okay, so, do you know what type of pipe the existing is? Probably PVC.
I would have to check because it wasn't on the original survey, so. And this is the sheet you said you couldn't read, right? This one, I do.
If it is PVC, and it's existing PVC?
It is, I'm sorry, it does call out an 8-inch PVC.
Okay, I would suggest you don't put a doghouse instance, it's going to leak.
Okay.
It's easy to cut the PVC pipe, all across the manhole, put two stubs in, boots. Otherwise, you're going to have a problem down the road. Now, you guys are a utility company, right? Why isn't the electric trench concrete encased? That's standard.
Why isn't it?
Yeah, it's not shown. You might have to show with fine gravel or coarse sand. That should be concrete encased. I'm getting the feeling that the sewer inverts here. I understand the precast manhole concept, but it looks like these are concrete inverts?
Yes.
Instead of brick, it's supposed to be brick inverts.
Okay.
In the sewer. Concrete's all right in the drain, but not in the sewer. And then on your water line?
Uh-huh.
With your thrust blocks, if you use Megalox, you can reduce the size of your thrust blocks as long as you use Gelox. It gets so many feet from either side of the bed. Save you time and money, just saying. And then on your CE 501, the way you show the silt fence, that's, where it says compost filler tube and silt fence, which is a wattle and silt fence?
Mm-hmm.
Right, you can't lay the silt fence underneath a wattle, that has to be buried in, and it's 6-inch trench. Otherwise, it doesn't work. It just goes right under the wall, under the silt fence, and where it wants to go. That's all I got.
Really?
Yeah. Let me spend some more time?
No, I'm.
I was going to say, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Just don't give him a page of that that he can read, then.
I'll give him credit. They didn't quote LeBaron about your project.
I think Mr. Verhoe is been doing enough of those meetings, so that's a reference. So there was a review done by Graves, however, we have not seen it. And even though all of the, you know, I's are dotted and T's are crossed, we intend to review that, so.
Did you see it, Adam?
Yeah, I came in later this afternoon. I glanced through it, I did thoroughly. It seemed like everything was across, but I haven't seen, I don't have a copy of the plans yet to really look through, so.
Are there any comments from the audience? Phil?
Phil Coyle, DPW Director of Town Engineer. Couple of comments or questions. The, what is the total area of disturbance that you have in the project?
It is?
Well, I couldn't offer you the example.
Well, let me just. 9.2 acres.
Okay, are you proposing any phase construction or are you putting on clearing and disturbing the entire site at once?
I would expect it's pretty much all at once.
Because, you know, in my experience, anytime that we have a project of this size and we open the entire.
Well, to be fair, the 9.2 would include like the disturbance over there, but over here is probably only like four acres, so that would be a little less.
The training area, to me, you have fairly steep grades there. I just think that you might want to look at, and the deployment might also require the phase construction so that we disturb one area and we stabilize it and then disturb another area. We've had too many projects where downstream, as much as we think they're controlled and you get, you know, a 4-inch rain event 24 hours and it's just a mess. So I would just recommend that we will get some kind of phasing for the project.
Just to speak to phasing, though, kind of ties into, I think, the hope that it would be in the immediate future, a use of the office, of the warehouse slash office building very quickly. In fact, we contemplated sort of bifurcating this project and coming to you with just the building site.
Sure.
So that we could get going on construction. I mean, they want to pull building permits as soon as possible on this stuff.
If it works for your, for your client, if it's the building in that top area being phase one, and maybe the training facility either done in a separate phase or considering the steepness of the grade, whether or not you even do that in two separate phases and stabilize it, you forward. But that's the flatter section, so probably less of an issue for construction. So I don't disagree with moving forward with that, certainly in first.
Yeah, I think that's the primary focus in the short term, is to get the building up and going.
So we do a phased deployment of the training yard, and what period would you suggest between phases?
Well, my own thoughts looking at it would be maybe the training yard is done in two phases in that upper portion of the building in that parking lot, considering it's fairly flat in that area. You could potentially do all that in one phase, as a separate phase, if the board is agreeable. Just a thought, you know, having seen a lot of these construction projects, we all have good intentions and then, you know, things unfortunately don't always work the way we planned. And that training facility, those roads are all paved?
No, they're gravel.
They're gravel, okay. When I saw the gray, I was like, so gravel, now what's the grade?
Yeah, it's steep.
10%? I mean, that is a concern. That gravel typically doesn't hold up well with steep grades.
We could look at potentially paving just the steeper parts of it.
I certainly would. I mean, if anyone's done, if you had gravel driveway or on a private road, 10% is a pretty steep grade gravel, it's going to wash out. So I would suggest you would be paving the steeper areas. The, also stop by the sewer office if you haven't already done so?
We did submit letters as part of our application, but we're just starting to.
We just want to make sure, that pump station that we have is one of our small pump stations in town. Just want to make sure that that's going to be adequate to handle the flows.
The one down by McDonald's?
No, this is actually right on Route 20. There's all the sewerage from Millbury Street, Montclair, Jade Hill, all flows in this direction by gravity, which I'm told originally was supposed to be more of a temporary situation with the pump station. It pumps it back uphill to Millbury Street, which then flows down to Holstrom Court behind Town Fiat Tower. So.
Really?
Wow.
I know we have a pump station down by McDonald's in Worcester, that pump.
Right, that's Holstrom Court, yes, that's our second largest. And so we just want to look at the pump station and make sure that that's, you know, adequate to handle the flow. Is there a kitchen in the, in the building, like a full-service kitchen? Okay, so, I just wondered as far as this track. The, when we had met with DCG, one of the concerns that I had was the truck traffic exiting from West Tech Drive through 20. I think it was indicated about 60 trucks in the morning around peak hour, which I'm not, you know, that intersection has a relatively high frequency of accidents already, whether or not, had a minimal signage could be added on Mass, on Route 20, Mass DOT approval, whether it's just trucks entering or something just to draw attention to the motorists that the trucks are entering. I mean, it's, I'm sure it doesn't trip traffic signal warrants, but, and also in discussions with Mass DOT, because you will butt the turnpike, there's also an indirect access permit. What they like to do is review it to make sure that there's no impacts to the highway. I don't suspect this would be, but because of the butts, the turnpike, you need to speak with Mass DOT. At the same time, maybe present, or talk to them about signage, that they would be willing to allow you to install in both the eastbound, westbound directions of Route 20, warning the motorists that the trucks are entering. And during the DCG meeting, I think there was mention, made mention to extending the gas main of Route 20? Is that something that's still in the works?
The site's currently serviced by propane tanks, propane tanks, and the gas line is down West Tech, down 20, maybe out in front of Lundgren or somewhere down, maybe further in the road. The site's currently serviced by propane tanks, propane tanks, and the, the gas line is down West Tech, down 20, maybe out in front of Lundgren or somewhere down, maybe further down the road, but that's, that's the intention at some point.
In the long term, yes, that's it.
It won't happen right away.
Okay, okay. I just, I remembered that part you mentioned.
It would just supply, you know, it would be available to for West Tech Drive, property owners.
And I think that was, I think that's me, what I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
I got three more.
Is everyone Curtis, file 27 Pin Rock Road? I'm just curious about the back two lots, the water runoff. You said the grade was what there?
It's five to 10 percent.
Well, right now, if we had a rainstorm, it's like a river going out Pin Rock Road right now. If you get a bad rainstorm. I can show you pictures to show why it's not the road. And plus, my property behind me is a total swamp now. It's like my yard, my property's like a sponge. Two and a half acres there, and I can't handle no more water down below. Running two meter fires 24/7, since West Tech, man.
Through, through the chair, if I could just add, through that maybe way of reassuring that there wouldn't be an increase in the runoff, in the peak flow, have you looked at the training facility as its own point of interest?
Yeah, it is a separate watershed from the building because it, um, the, the building parcel goes into the existing detention pond, but the training doesn't, so we are, um, the Leek Street goes into a small plunge pool-type basin, and then the rest of it does just sort of continue with what it's doing today.
Does that provide?
We were meeting in peak flow, so there's
It's not flowing much from my yard, I tell you that.
So you're not increasing the peak flow?
No.
Increasing flow, but not peak flow?
Well, it's
The majority of that training yard area, right, I mean, it's not all, not all of the acreage that is owned is being developed, and the majority of it is, is pervious, right?
Correct. I mean, there's the mixed gravel, which is partially impervious, and there's, it's grass under the whole areas, so, um, you know, right now, it's, it is wooded, but it's very rocky, so you I don't wanna say you would it, it should change kind of what it's, it's doing.
So through the chair, if we increase the impervious area through pavement, then you'd have to increase
We would have to adjust that slightly.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? John?
Uh, three more things. Any gas main trench? I see you have the tracer wire, but you don't have any requirement for a warning tape. Then you mentioned
The walls are gonna be much better now. Sorry.
You mentioned retaining walls? How high are the retaining walls? There's no detail on the plan for it.
Um, well, we're still developing the detail, but they're up to 13, it's up to 15 feet, so they would be engineered retaining walls.
Okay, so what goes on the top of the retaining wall?
Fence.
How high is the fence? I mean,
Oh, it's the same
There's no detail, there's no design, so I have nothing to look at.
Isn't that the perimeter fence?
Yeah, which we're calling that a six-foot-high chain link, but
Is that, oh, you got cars parking up near it?
Nope, there's, well, that's a lie. There are, on the south side, there aren't cars, but parking against it, but there is a driveway, and there will be cars parked against the northern one, but that one is a cut law instead of a fill law, so, um, you're at the bottom of it.
So you're digging in the back, the little retaining wall, you get a wheel stop at the ends of the, at the ends of the parking spaces?
So, we can, um, I mean, in the gravel, it'd be a little funky, but we could
Oh, you're just leaving it gravel? Um, and my next question was, you have 100 people working in there, and you said there's a potential for another 100, plus you have the 60 trucks.
Well
The city trust would be part of the, the 100 group.
But they, why, you have the 60 trucks leaving, but they're gonna leave 60 cars behind? Correct, because they gotta get to work. So my concern is at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, when work lets out, you have 200 cars leaving the site?
Correct, but it's a comparison to what the FedEx was, so we are showing an increase in trips in the afternoon, but it's still below 100 from the existing
From the morning?
It was actually a decrease in the morning of 25 trips. And it's all when the peak is versus.
Because if you have 100 people that stay there, or leaving 60 trucks, and you have another 100 trainees coming, and that's 200. Right, so how can it decrease in the morning? You can't have less coming in in the morning and more leaving in the afternoon, is the way I'm looking at it.
Oh. It does normally work that way. It's like the distribution of it, because it's not like, it's not really like shift changes where, you know, it's like a distribution center and everybody comes in for the same time, like, you know, it, so it does vary, because if you finish working a little earlier that day, you would leave you mean, you don't have to work until, well, it just, it's not like a shift change, so it does vary.
Right, so the crews come in, I don't know what time they start, 7:00? What time does training start? 7:00? 7:30?
Well, right, we assumed
No, probably closer to 8:30, 9:00, because most of the crews are traveling from all over the state of Massachusetts, so we factor in the travel time.
I don't understand the answer.
The crews will start later than 7:00. The arriving crews, the gas operations teams, will start at 7:00, but the training crews, I'm sorry, I should've said training, begins later.
Okay. So there's all between the two?
There's a little of each of them.
I just wonder, we're gonna put a traffic light up there.
Right. At, on West Tech?
No, on Route 20.
Sure, I'm glad it came up, because I think what we've talked about is, you know, the traffic that we're producing doesn't trip the warrants, as Bill referenced, so, you know, when we first started talking about this project and talked to DCG, we suggested, we would love a light, to be honest, but if it doesn't meet the threshold, it's not gonna happen. So that's, that's
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's not, it was one of the first questions asked when we all started talking about this.
Through the chair, have we looked at what the warrants are, and can we come close to meeting any, a peak hour warrant?
We have not looked at them. I mean, we were based on our traffic analysis. We didn't think we needed one. And we did look at the accident data, and, you know, you say there's a lot of accidents, but I don't know that it really translates. Like, it didn't strike us as concerning when we reviewed it.
I, I can tell you the police respond to quite a few accidents there. So I'm not sure if you researched it through the Department of Police Department or through the red sheet.
I'm sorry, it might have been, I'm not sure.
So my only concern would be is if you're gonna reach out to, you have to reach out to Mass DOT relative to the indirect access permit. I would suggest talking to Joe Frawley, the traffic engineer
Okay.
in the district, which I think I mentioned at the DCG meeting. Very likely you don't trip any warrants, but certainly I think it should be discussed with Mass DOT. And they don't typically signalize a intersection with just a peak hour warrant only, but when you are close proximity to other signals, they might look at other ones, so.
Sure.
It's, it's worth the conversation.
Definitely.
Any other comments from the audience? Guys, anything else? All right, and so until we see the Graves report and they are able to review that, we'll just continue the hearing to
So, so madam, madam, sorry, just would, would point out, you know, when we started processing our applications and making filings, and we were on a timeline anticipating we potentially have that November, 2nd November meeting, which we didn't end up having, which I completely understand. We had, you know, submitted much earlier, um, you know, in anticipation of hopefully having Graves do their review, have it come back, try to address those questions, so that we came in here, we, we would accomplish what we have, which is a clean review letter, so that we could potentially, you know, close the public hearing tonight and move on with an approval. The reason I say that is, we're gonna lose a month or so between now and your neck, your next hearing, which is kind of time-critical for the project and moving forward with getting operations in there in a timely fashion. So I know you haven't had time to review the letter. I mean, I have copies. I'm happy to provide to you. You know, we can
We have them as well. We have them as well.
But there, there really aren't any comments that are outstanding.
But Bill has raised some other, um, items that we'd like to see you discuss with Mass DOT. We'd like some answers on those.
I'm not sure we're gonna get an answer from Mass DOT before your next meeting.
Well, um, how long ago was the DCG meeting, Bill?
A month?
A month and a half.
Yeah, conversation could have happened with Frawley in that time.
But whether or not we need a traffic light isn't, isn't, it's really not, it's an off-site condition.
Yeah.
Right, which, we're not gonna, we wouldn't, we, we're not gonna, we, we believe we don't trip any of the thresholds, right? That was the determination that was made. That's why we haven't gone for that, you know, permit specifically to do a traffic light there. You know, we can have that conversation. I'm not, I guess, what I'm suggesting is I'm not sure we're gonna come back with a letter that says, yes.
I understand that, I understand that, but at least you'll have had a conversation. Also, what about the pump station flow, and then the, talking about the runoff with gravel versus being paved, and, you know, there's, there's quite a few rather large outstanding, uh, items that I don't feel real comfortable with closing the hearing and giving approval at this point. And how the rest of you feel about that? I mean, you brought up some good points.
I see both sides of it.
Sure, of course.
Especially given the holiday schedule we've carried on, and if that, if that Graves letter truly is clear, you know, I don't know how we'd accomplish it. I mean, is there any way to accomplish, if they haven't submitted a phase to us, a phase plan, can we approve a phase till they get started on the main building? Is that possible? I don't know.
Let's say you have, you don't have a phase plan.
That you have the phases provided, require documentation, say, by the next meeting.
So then you get pump station increasing the, where the runoff will go.
I would expect that to be pretty minor, just
Yeah, having a conversation with Mass DOT.
Yeah, and the, and the pump station, I mean, to, we didn't really address that. When you look at the building, I mean, Ron's the architect, and people in there probably know better than I, but we're, we're adding about, what, 20,000 square feet of, of building space. And, you know, I'm not sure how much flow we're actually increasing up there, so that we need to look at the pump station as it relates to this project. Seems like it's a, a little bit of a stretch to suggest that this project is gonna trigger, you know, a need to upgrade the pump station.
How many employees do FedEx have up there?
I am not sure.
I doubt if it was 200.
Bill?
My, I think it's certainly, certainly something that has to be addressed prior to issuance of any building permit, so we could handle that through that fashion. Probably more of a concern would be that if we add pavement to the training facility, that changes the hydrology calculations, so that would have to be reviewed by, by Graves. So, I mean, there are some changes, and we've had projects before that we approved with conditions, only come back to haunt us while we do that, so.
And we've got engineered retaining walls with no details, fences, designs.
Well, there is a fence, but we were just doing geotech onsite this week, so.
I'm really feeling pressure to, you know, make this happen, and I'm not comfortable with it, but, John? Scott? Nick?
Just for clarity's sake, too, I agree with, to your point where it seemed like we're, when's our next actual meeting?
January 14th.
The next normally scheduled one is December 24th.
I'm not coming up. That's gonna be a hard no for me.
I guess in, in that sense, we're, we're just sort of a victim of the calendar, you know, the Thanksgiving week one, I, I understand why, you know, you wouldn't wanna have that time bogged down either, and then obviously, 24th of December is not on anybody's calendar to do anything other than, you know, celebrate with family, et cetera, so I understand. We're, we're just, we're victim to the calendar. It's costing us a lot of time on the project.
But you're looking at the bright side, Teddy. You get an extra day in February.
I understand, I understand, I, I, no, there's, there's issues, you know, we need to address, so.
Absolutely.
Take those in order and
To continue the hearing to January 14th.
It's flying, you'll like it, apparently.
Second? Any further discussion? Those in favor, I'll see you on the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what? You're doing, you're doing a great job on that.
You have to weigh something like this, is it, is it possible to split it and say, okay, well now this faces
715 Appalachian CGT Inc. requesting a special permit in site Oh, in site plan approval. Under 3.9, 0.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a drive-through coffee shop located at 711 Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass., map 61 parcel 37. Hi.
Hi.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Sure. For record, my name is Philippe Cravo of Our Levek Associates, here tonight representing applicant CGT, Kevin Simon Inc., CEO Kevin Simon, for the special permit and site plan application for the proposed site improvements at 711 Southwood Street, Route 20. I believe the board is familiar with the location. It's the Auburn Plaza where the TJ Maxx parking shop and a few other, there's a restaurant Jasmine there, and a AAA office as well. In particular, where the proposed site improvement, site improvements are being proposed is, uh, there's a small existing building, formerly a jewelry store, you can see up on the, on the AMF Jewelers. So just to kind of recap the existing conditions, the existing site where all these proposed site improvements are being proposed is 100% impervious. There's just a sea of pavement out there right now. My, except for, you know, some minor landscaping around the existing building. What we're proposing is to obviously demolish that existing building, relocate the new building, which is about 841 square feet, off towards the, towards the west a little bit from where that existing building is located, in order to make some setback requirements to the property line. This, where we're proposing this building, it butts the property line with the existing Friendly's restaurant right, right next door. And what's kind of unique about this situation is that there's a low point, there's a drainage, there's a drain inlet on the site behind this building, can't really see it, it's low, it's right here on the site plan. That side of Friendly's parking lot actually drains to that inlet, so they have a series of curb openings on, on, um, instead of having just a wall of curb, they have a curb that has openings in it to let the water pass through to get to that, that low point, so that's an existing conditions that we have to work around. So if you notice that on the proposed site design, there's, um, the, I guess, the landscaped island along that property line mimics those, is right directly adjacent to those curb openings to let, to, to keep that that stormwater runoff access to that low point. So, just, so as far as the proposed site improvements are concerned, there's an existing access to the site, which we're looking down the driveway right here, that is going to be maintained, that'll be the main access to where this is, uh, being located. I don't think I mentioned, this is gonna be the new, to propose drive-through-only coff, coffee shop. Cat's out of bag, I think it's, Duncan, it's gonna be a Duncan Donuts. It's so, but it's drive-through only, which I think is kind of
It's gonna be a Duncan Donuts?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is unique, in that there's no retail sale of coffee or sandwiches or pastries, so there's no pedestrian access to the interior of the building. The parking lots The parking lots, the parking spaces you see adjacent to the building are there to accommodate the employees for the, for the, for the drive-through, for the business. So that being said, we did, we have met with the DCG, there's a, you know, we got a lot of good feedback at that meeting. We have revised the plans based on that meeting, but we are waiting for the peer review comments to come back. So fully aware that this meeting will be continued to the, to the January meeting, which will actually give us a chance to kind of address the peer review comments and produce a complete revised set of plans rather than issuing multiple revised sets. I think it's the cleanest way to go. One of the biggest concerns that I feel that came out of that meeting was obviously the impact to the existing parking lot. The proposed site plan is going to kind of encroach on some of the existing parking spaces of the site, mainly to provide the drive aisles for the drive-through and the bypass lane. We have, you know, so we're gonna impact that, but that'll be addressed through re-striping of the existing, of the existing parking lot to, to go, to get two-way traffic in all directions for the site. We have met the landscape requirements per the zoning by law. We're in a highway business zone, so everything has been addressed. Hopefully, the peer review will state that as such. All utilities will be accessed off of Southbridge Street. They're all currently accessed there now, so it's reconnecting the utilities to the new building. We have received two, two review letters, one from the building commissioner, that he has, you know, he stated some concerns. We're certainly happy to discuss those and address those as, as kind of we seek the water department. We also received a letter from the water department, but that's more technical, you know, you know, new two-inch water line to the proposed facility and things along those lines that you wanna see on a site plan like, like this one here. Not surface improvements, I should say. So, that being said, I think, I'm just turning it over to the board, I can answer any questions. And hopefully, we have an answer for you.
Steve?
So the parking spaces there, are you accounting any in the rest of the lot or is it just specific to this?
So the way that the parking chart was calculated was for the entire facility, for the entire site. So that's, there's one thing we're working on right now is, actually I think Bill recommended it, we're gonna end up doing it, is actually going into each one of those spaces like TJ Maxx, they don't have like interior floor plans, so we have to calculate what is exactly required. We, the way we did it was, you know, we took the, you know, the whole building without knowing those exact interior spaces. It's hard to define, you know, 180 square feet, you know, one parking spot for every 180 square feet and employees and such, so. We had done it, you know, we just assumed 80% of the building was occupied, 20% was storage, so we calculated based on that. So that's the number you see in the plans. And then, and then we obviously adjusted that to, to the reduced number of spaces in the proposed condition. We still met it in that condition, but at DCG meeting kinda wanted a better required existing number. So that's what, we're working on that right now.
So I believe we required 24 feet around it for the fire trucks, is that correct?
Double check that.
And I'm just, sorry, I see 20 feet and I'm just not sure.
The fire department was at the DCG meeting, they didn't state any particular concern with access around the site. It is a small, I mean, it's 800 square feet, an 800 square foot building.
They can follow up.
Yeah.
Just to see if that would coincide, they did receive initial, initial plans, but I have not received comments. Yeah, so the Friendly's lot is separate from this though, right? So you wanna include that piece? Then I, they see like traffic flow from the parking spaces back out and then that kinda ends up intersecting with the way that traffic comes out as well as traffic in and out of the entire parking lot from Route 12. Any thought to making it a one-way and making these cars go around, closing this in to stop?
So we have, and that was a comment that came up at the DCG meeting, was, you know, was, which was really good, I think Adam, you brought it up, that, you know, the cars stacking in the drive-through would obviously impact, the way it's laid out in this scenario would impact the, you know, the two-way traffic over here in this, in this case. In the revised layout, you know, essentially this two-way traffic lane got pushed over. I mean, we impacted more parking spaces in that, in that way. But we've maintained that two-way traffic lane here and sort of built a striped island here to segregate the two, the two, you know, the drive-through and the, I guess, the retail traffic, the mall traffic. These parking spaces, they do back out into here, but these are, you know, these are, these are employee parking, so there's gonna be minimal turnover in these spaces and at off-peak times. You know, these, these are employees that are getting there, you know, before it opens and then there's, you know, there's a shift change at some point in the morning, but that's gonna be after the peak, the peak hour, the peak rush of the morning traffic.
I could see that as intended use, but if I saw a Dunkin' Donuts, I'd probably park my car and try to go in.
If I saw a line of cars, that probably hurts.
So, I mean, there's unintended. Do we have the revised, or you made a revision after the?
I did make a revision, but I, I haven't sent that to Adam because it was, it was sort of an in-between.
All right, I was just making sure.
Just to have a discussion tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
I just wanna make sure you were referencing something.
I did bring the revised site layout plan, if you really wanted to look at it, but, but that's, that's what we're talking about. And that, and you can see that, totally segregated the two there.
Just forget everything we just.
Start over.
So I think, I mean, I think it'd be reversed. I mean, obviously, and I know that, just put it out a little bit, but we've had conversations before about traffic patterns and leading into the street and this is far closer than anything we've discussed before.
Concerning, especially when.
Yes, and it's the same street, which we just referred to.
However, I mean, that, you know, it's craziness and this is showing nine cars queued. We know that's not, that's not realistic. Yeah, but that's not realistic, really, seriously, from what we see, particularly at peak times.
Well, yeah, well, that was a big concern that I had as well and I asked the, you know, I specifically asked, you know, Kevin about his current facility and he's like, he says he sees, you know, nine to 10 cars from the window back up, you know, stacked up behind it. And we have, you know, we can stack up to 13 up before we're in front of the exit lane of the drive-through.
And where's the current facility that you're referring to?
Just down the.
I know. But my, my, my point, my point is that you're in the middle.
Three-tenths of a mile.
Yeah, my point is that you're in a shopping plaza that's gonna have substantially more traffic than right down the street where there's nothing else around it. So I just get concerns because, I mean, we just got, we just did the same thing a month ago, I don't know, obviously, on another site, but it's, we're running into the same problem on the other Dunkin' Donuts down the street.
Absolutely, and the, you know, the overarching thing too for that entire parking lot, as it stands now, it's helta skelta. And so there's no defined, you know, even though there's lines, there are no defined endings of any aisles. So people are just willy-nilly every which way in that. I mean, this is going to, if it's not bad now, this has the potential to make it that much worse.
We could raise the islands to find us a solid.
Yeah.
I think that does do some.
It could help, I mean, that does help.
Yeah.
You'd have to put an island in the entrance, because I can tell you right now, it was gonna, you see where the white arrow is?
Yep.
It was gonna go on the left side to get to that coffee shop quicker.
Yeah.
That's certainly an option, to put an island at the.
Slow people down.
It's certainly wide enough, I mean, it's not, it's not the, you know.
The keep right only sign. And then you gotta, like you said, there'd be more than 13 cars queued, there's more than 13 cars queued at the other Dunkin' Donuts. They've seen them all the way out to Route 20, I mean, to Route 12.
Yeah.
That's more than 13 cars. You go from the pickup window.
And even the one up this street, the one that's three-tenths of a mile up to, to the west, that, we've seen that one, that's a good guy sitting out on, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, it's, they're in the middle of the shopping.
Yeah, I mean, if you have them in a row, maybe it'll alleviate a little bit, but people, but, I don't know.
Have them come from behind the TJ Maxx?
I know, doing, working on this.
They come off of Route 20 behind the TJ Maxx.
I like the effect.
The whole thing is concerning, I would, you know, ultimately, if we had, say, I would say that that whole parking lot would have to be upgraded with this, with this proposal to.
When you say whole parking lot upgraded?
The whole parking lot, you know, berms at the end of each one of the aisles are curbing and, you know, like a real parking lot to prevent, with stop signs and, and travel lanes and people having to, you know, say, take a Simon, the Simon Mall, you know? There's, there's actual physical travel lanes with stop signs and right turns and left turns and, like I said, it's helta skelta. And, you know, with the two openings, people are just shooting in, actually, in the third opening off of, what's that little side street?
Prospect.
Prospect. It gets crazy.
It's crazy in that parking lot, because believe it or not, the other night I was down by TJ Maxx, I saw somebody driving out and there's a car right underneath the light with a, that post says, boom, drives right in. Didn't see it.
So I think this is gonna add to the chaos.
So would there, I mean, I understand the, the queuing up into the entrance, right? I understand how that can be concerning. There's certainly other options to reconfigure the queue line to go maybe somewhere else on the property so that doesn't go right up into the entrance maybe, you know, and this parking lot kinda takes an L to the left.
Is there potential for that? I mean.
Well, not, the whole thing with these, these buildings is visibility, right? So you wanna be able to see the buildings. So I think the building location, not that, that it's locked in, but, you know, somewhere in this, sort of along the frontage of Southbridge Street, you don't wanna tuck the building up, up.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm really suggesting.
Bring the queue around.
The queue would have to start way out in the back.
Even, even on the entry into there, if you separate it where you have to go into the parking lot and have a different queue, that way there isn't that crisscross pattern which this.
Well, that becomes a one-way entering the pocket, which is what I think would make the most sense, instead of having people, like you said, John, they're just gonna come in and they're gonna go straight for that, no matter what's coming up out of that.
Yeah, so, yeah, definitely have like, you know, the entrance, let's call it, to, to the drive-through, you know, somewhere else so that, you know, they're not coming in and going, veering straight off towards the building, they have to actually go in and around.
And that, again, with normal travel lanes and things within that parking lot would, would make that, you know.
How far is it from the building?
Turn out of there.
To the L where the parking lot takes a left.
From the building.
An existing building, no. The back of that, or the south side, I should say, or the side of this. Yeah, from right there. A part, what's the distance from that, the edge of the building there? Yep, all the way to the corner of the parking lot, down the way with a trail truck, right there, yeah.
120 feet?
I'd make that a whole island.
It's almost what we have.
I don't see it, but.
We're coming all the way down to the property line where the, the end of Friendly's there, that's this line back here. That's that line.
And how far you moving the building to the left on the page?
It'll be about 25 feet from the property line.
Does that meet the setback requirement?
Yes.
Put that whole front area there, Bill, is that town easement there? That big green area in front of the building?
The green, green area?
Yeah.
The state?
That's the state.
Well, it kinda cuts through the middle of it.
I don't think the state would own all of that, I think they might own maybe 10 feet off the curb, I would say, a berm. If I could, I, you know, my concerns are, as echo what your concerns are, the internal traffic flow. Internally within the parking lot, but also on Route 12. Even with the aerial view, if you look at, we pan to the left, you can see we're coming into the left turn lane, Prospect Street. If, one of the things.
Can you pan over a little bit?
You know, it's, so you're not, you're not, in the turning lane, so you're in a through lane, so any additional traffic on Route 20 westbound, turning into that driveway is just that much more turning movement, especially in the morning peak hour, people are gonna be stopped waiting to go left while they have the eastbound traffic or northbound in this direction opposing them. So now you're just sitting there waiting to turn, backing traffic up. So I think, I know, we suggested again to talk to Mass DOT, because you're gonna need a permit from them to do this.
Yep, I've reached out to them, I just haven't heard back from them.
Right, and, you know, they, they would have some concerns relative to access, I'm sure, especially knowing it's a Dunkin' Donuts. But even with that, I just think where it's kinda crammed in that corner, it's gonna be a challenge for you to separate out the traffic from that plaza from your traffic going to the Dunkin' Donuts. So I think that's something where, without, you know, coming up with suggestions, more for you to come back with ideas of how you could do that. Because I think right now, the traffic is combined and I don't know how you're gonna separate it to make it something that's gonna be feasible and not create a problem. So I think, I was there last week, the parking lot was full. So I just don't see it, don't, don't, it's going, it's a great thing.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Unfortunately, it's also shows that there's not a lot of room there. And it's gonna be difficult to get something to work in that corner.
Is there potential for the parking lot to be upgraded? Or is that something that's?
I mean, I can discuss that, it's, it's a different entity that owns the site, that's, that's doing these site improvements, so, you know, I'd be hard pressed to say that this, you know, the owner doing this is gonna wanna work on the whole parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
So what are you guys doing, leasing this piece of land to put your building on?
Yes, yeah, leasing a portion of the existing one.
So what happens when this doesn't work out, we're gonna have another abandoned building over there?
Well, I, all intents are it's gonna work out, they're making a big investment for it to work out.
Just another question if I could.
Sure.
Is it coffee only or you have donuts and pastries?
No, yeah, it'll be everything.
So that, we had talked about a grease trap, you would be required a grease trap if you move forward?
Yeah, that's, and, and we would, we need all those utility requirements for sure. They're not, they don't cook, that's all.
Right, it's micro波.
There's no fats.
More of the framing.
There's plenty of grease on my hands when I'm done eating, you know?
But it doesn't go down the drain.
Did anybody else from the public have anything they wanted to add? John?
Hi, Robert Palansky. My family owns the property that Duncan is currently on and the Simons family have been our tenant for over 30 years and they've been nothing but great people. I haven't, I've got nothing bad to say about them. And again, I wish Kevin, Kevin who has taken over for his uncle, Gabe who passed away, because Kevin's dad, Charles, those are the original two people, Gabe and Charles, that built the property, or built the building that's on our property. My concern here is, Adam, could you open this up a little further this way?
That's fine.
Yes, hold on, I think you, a little more, just a little more, okay. We, we own the building, the two buildings, the former, the new Auburn Pharmacy in this building here and this is asphalt comes down to here. And in here is where all of the water from this project drains into here. This was 10 years ago, and Adam, if you just open it just a little bit more, is, right here is there is, there's a 24-inch drainage that goes across Sibley Street that empties out onto this side, which then finally ends up being part of Doc Brook. And 10 years ago, this gene got caught, got clogged and there was four feet of water in this building. building. Mr. Coyle probably can attest to this, the last couple of years, Adam, if you just swing that up a little bit, is, a little more, so we can see Route twenty, yes, a little more, okay, now go west. Right here on Route twenty, occasionally there has been flooding to where the water has backed up and can't get through here. And I understand, the Auburn Plaza's been there since I was ten years old, that, again, it's been there a long, long time, but what they don't have, and again, I read the narrative that you've got here, is, there's a couple of things that, I believe, all of this water sheets this way here, and there's one, there may be a catch base in here, but there's one catch base in here, and then it dumps out into this area right here, and in fact, in your narrative says that there are no wetlands. I'll give you a sheet of paper.
Okay.
I'll give you a sheet of paper that shows that there's a wetland here, and in fact, if you sent a biologist over there, he would tell you all of this growth here is indigenous to wetland growth. You know, my tenant, who's in the bottom section there, she's worried every time there's a rainstorm that the water's gonna back up, and we are, we are not in a floodplain according to the old map. The new map says there's no floodplain over here whatsoever, and when you did your narrative, that's what you looked at.
Yeah.
But the old, the old map shows that all of this area in here is floodplain. But anyways, and again, I don't wanna put this on the back of Kevin Simons, is, is, look, you're replacing a five hundred and forty square foot building with an eight hundred and forty square foot building, and making a statement that there is no increase in runoff?
Not an increase, correct.
Is that because you're adding the greenery that's gonna go around here?
There's a reduction in, there's a reduction, there's a total net reduction in impervious surface.
But I think, and Madam Chairman, to get to your point, is, it'd be, it'd be nice to just redo that whole parking lot, but being a fellow snowplower from years and years and years ago, we used to hate those mediums, 'cause all you do is hit 'em and either break a plow, or you end up messing up the, if they're asphalt, you end up busting it, or if it's granite, you break your plow. And granted, is, yeah, they, I think it's, my neighbor's from Charlton, Pete Vich in Charlton Wells, that does the snow plowing there, and I believe this is the area where they put all the snow. Now, this is the new home of Domino Pizza, which is just getting set up now and getting ready to open. And again, I wish Kevin all the luck in the world, but the thing is, is when you're gonna go and you've got the two-way traffic here, and to bring traffic in this way, and then have them queue around the building, are these people gonna be in a mandatory right, or what happens if they wanna go west? Do they go through the parking lot? Again, I don't know, but I'm concerned about the runoff, I'm concerned about the, you know, that particular part. I understand that you're putting in a couple of these retention, detention basins?
So, the stormwater has been upgraded in that we are proposing two new water quality units, so we're improving over existing conditions with, by improving the water quality, we're treating the water to a higher level than exists today.
Right, but that would be just for this area right here?
It would be, it would be for whatever's tributary to that existing inlet structure.
Right, right, 'cause currently, as you pointed out, all of Friendly's water flows this way and then this way.
So, that would be treated as well?
Yeah, I don't know if years ago that all of their property was one, and then they sold it.
Yeah, I don't know how they ever got away with no drainage and just sheeting off to the adjacent, to the adjacent property.
Been there a long time.
It was a long, long time ago, there was no stormwater management, and the thing is, what has happened over the years, 'cause I believe this is a new section to the Auburn Plaza, 'cause if I recall right, this, this opening right here, you could come off Route twenty and go straight through. Then what they did was they added this on, and that's when they added all this parking, and I don't know if the storm, that was prior to ninety-six, I don't know if there was any stormwater management in place at the time, you know, for the Plaza, but I know that, you know, between, between the owners and my tenant there, whenever we have severe rainstorms, is everyone's nervous, last, I think it was last spring, we saw, I think, of three or four inches of rain at three or four o'clock in the afternoon? Was it, no, no, no?
The year before.
Oh, okay, it was the year before, and, you know, things happen, but what happened is, the water just came right up that back parking lot, because over here on Sibley Street, it's a twenty-four inch pipe. I'm working with, with my wetland specialist in putting together a possible meeting with Mr. Coyle, Ken over at the Highway Department, 'cause the state is planning on doing work over at the bridge, the turnpipe, is to see if we can get that, that pipe at Sibley Street increased, or at least duplicated, so, because it just can't handle all the flow, and, you know, when the Auburn Mall was there, fine, Adam, could you pull that back a little bit? A little more, a little more, a little more, I just wanna, the water that comes from here goes across the street, all of this water from here, and again, they put in stormwater, but it goes this way, okay, so that, and when these new things happen, again, I'd be the last one to say, don't allow development, but, you know, there's a reason why the engineers have all these formulas, and 'cause it does work. But what happens is, when you get an area this big, that's been there for sixty, sixty-five years, who has no retention, no detention, when you get a two or three inch burst over an hour and a half, that water just flies this way and then it backs up. So, I'm, again, that's one of my major concerns.
So, we've got two challenges, we've got a parking lot that's helter-skelter, and we have a water problem.
But his actual area is gonna reduce the watershed, 'cause even if he just extended the building?
Yep.
You haven't increased the watershed, 'cause it's taking the place of pavement, payments impervious, so, by adding the islands, he's reducing the total runoff. So, there's a water problem there now, there's no argument there.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's two problems on the site, not related to this one.
And maybe, we still don't know what the parking requirements are for that place yet, so, I think any...
Well, and I think mainly this is for discussion this evening anyways, to...
Yeah, yeah, we're not expecting to, to call tonight, so...
Did you have anything else, Steve, Nick?
No, I mean, I think I just would wanna stress, like, the nature of having those at the end of all the aisles within that parking lot, would at least slow the traffic down through there, and I think that would alleviate a lot of concerns. I mean, just, you know, nature is, when half that is empty, you see cars drive through the middle of them, and they wouldn't be able to, those are at the end of the aisles.
They can't get through the light, or, you know, the prospect, they're shooting through the parking lot, I mean, it's insane.
And I think that something like that, that side, people would think to enter in from the Prospect Street side, and then go up back, and then you'd be like, turn a looping in, you know, I just...
Yeah, I hope, it's just, I don't know, we're already, like I say, we're already seeing the result at several other locations in town.
So, I think, I guess the feedback that I'm getting is obviously the internal traffic of the parking lot, sort of making these islands, at least this island, and an island at the entrance to sort of direct and control traffic in this location here. And then, obviously, the queue, right, the queue, the location of the queue line, not having a queue back up towards the entrance, you know, trying to come up with a way to have a queue in another direction, which will be interesting.
Through the chair, I guess, another question, with the driveway coming in, it's pretty steep grade, and it's short and very abrupt, you know what that grade is?
I can tell you right now.
Certainly in the winter, you know, cars keep getting out of there.
Right, and that was a concern, that the, so you got one foot over...
He was pulling out of here.
That was, that was a concern that the... And I took a look at it, and where you're coming, where you're coming out of the drive-through line, you're coming into, you know, a nice flat area, it's not like you're coming in and if you were to take a right, you'd be, you know, coming out and going straight up, straight up the slope, you'd be coming out, you know, you'd have a big flat, you'd be in this sort of intersection area.
Through the chair, my concern is the approach to Route twelve is where it steepens, so if you're trying to pull off, it's very abrupt, great change.
There is.
So, you have the challenge of your internal parking, trying to separate that out in some way, whether or not you can even do that with your one driveway opening that you currently have, and also looking at the, the traffic patterns on Route twelve itself. So, I think, quite a few major things you need to look at.
Yeah, so we did get a letter from Traffic Engineer, McMahon and Associates, a large traffic firm, they looked at the, the turning movements, as well as the site distance for this exit and this intersection, and both of those, we have greater than the minimum required site distance for, in both directions, and there was no, their conclusion was there was no concerns as far as getting back into the traffic patterns leaving the site from this, from, you know, from...
Once you're up there, yes, if you were to measure it, the problem is, when you pull out of there, your grade is pretty abrupt, and so, you're sitting at somewhat of an angle, steep angle, watching the traffic, you can see it, but it's not, it's not a comfortable approach to Route twelve, just something to point, it just, it just makes this area that much more complicated, I think, than being a desirable location for the traffic. And I don't know if you have a need to say, is the current Dunkin' Donuts staying, is this just to supplement that demand, or offset that demand, or is this gonna be the new location of Dunkin' Donuts?
Not a hundred percent sure on that, but I think it would move here.
Yeah.
I'm ninety-eight percent sure, again, having a discussion with Kevin, his lease is up July first. Because one of the things, been no extension, and, excuse me for a second, Bill, and like Kevin said, he says, Rob, I don't know if, if this is gonna fly, and I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get financing, you know, but like I said to him, Kevin, business is business, I gotta move forward, you're moving forward, I totally understand, no hard feelings, and you gotta do what you gotta do.
Sure, and one of the things that works well, where he's currently located, is if you're heading southbound, or some people say westbound, Route twelve runs north-south, they're heading towards Charlton, there's a gore area there now, it's about twelve feet wide, so even though it's not a turning lane, you can actually stop there in that gore area, and it's a protected area to stop, to wait for the break in traffic to turn left. This won't, as designed now, doesn't have that, so when you're stopped waiting to turn left into the driveway, you have traffic behind you backing up to...
Right, to the settlement.
Cool deal.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Adam, could you open that back up again to the site?
And the other way, to Prospect Street.
Yeah.
Right. People let people in, gonna stop the... According to the plan, is, this area right here is gonna be a delivery zone area, which is what it said on the plan.
Yes.
It was a loading zone, yes.
A loading zone.
Right, and, and they're still gonna do the muffins and the donuts, but in the plan it says twice a week. I know Kevin's not gonna bring inventory in there twice a week, trying to sell it for fresh, he's gonna have, it's gonna come in at least every day, at least every day, and the thing is, is that right now, they have a trailer truck that comes in, the site at seven seventeen, and that trailer truck actually will block the parking lot in order for them to deliver what they need to deliver, so, there's a chance that trailer truck is gonna be here, unless they go across here and just stop, so...
Block your queue.
Yeah, and then, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we can...
Well, I think it's time, you know, go back and take another look at it and see if we come up with a better plan.
Okay.
We agree?
I just want, I wanna know what, you know, what the concerns are, to have something, like a goal to kinda work towards. Obviously, the peer review will come back, so we'll address it whatever they, you know, whatever comes of that, and then, obviously, you know, just, just traffic, really, I guess...
And traffic's not getting better.
As the...
Appreciate Christmas.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean, it's just overall not getting better.
Through the chair, have you looked at another location, they get the DCG meeting zone that mentioned, parallel to Route twelve, between the driveways, extending the queue, closing off on the driveways, I mean, there's other options, as the board mentioned, and kind of redesigning this lot.
We kinda switched it around, this was, I guess, the, kind of the go-to because of the existing building, and that's where they were, you know, it was the idea.
But, again, if the idea is the visibility, wouldn't it make more sense to put that building right along Route twelve with the, you know?
And to look at maybe one-way access in, and just look at your access, currently trying to improve that access, and having adequate queue lengths.
I'll...
Like I tell you, the police chief is very concerned about queue lengths, and I know that it's something he feels deeply about, having experienced issues with the current Dunkin' Donuts, I think, and other locations in town.
Had a couple of questions on you.
Sure. Sure. I was ready, after the last meeting, I was like, oh man, he's gonna look through the details.
Yeah, it is real quick, so, you don't have a lot of details, so... Have you spoken to the water sewer department yet?
Yes, Water Department issued their letter, and I've spoken to, I forget his name, I have it written in here.
Ken Smith.
Ken Smith is the director, but he was his, his go-to guy.
Scott Callahan?
Scott Callahan, yeah, in there, and two-inch water line, interior, you know, the meter will be inside, backflow preventers and all that stuff. It doesn't require fire suppression because of the building size, so we have had discussions with the water department.
And then, you show a manhole on your last page, D three, you don't set the requirements for the frame and cover, it's gonna be H twenty, and I'm not sure where you put a doghouse manhole.
Yeah, it would be that disconnection point, right, that right here. So, there's an existing drainage, let's call it drainage drain, that goes through the site, and in order to, so essentially, that that existing low point is right here, by building this island, we're sort of intercept, you know, putting an island in the flow path to get there, so we gotta put, you know, a new low point on this side of the site, so we have to get that water back into that main, so we're putting that water quality with the doghouse on top of that existing line there, and then tying into that.
What about your sewer construction?
There's an existing sewer manhole here, and the sewer flows in that direction.
Do you have enough grade to do a gravity from where you are, 'cause you're pretty low compared to Route twelve?
Yeah, the sewer man, the sewer man out there is...
That's one of the huge sections I'd like to look at.
Yeah, it's pretty low, it's, the rim is six thirty, the invert is six eighteen, so you got...
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet, twelve feet down.
And you're already down almost eight feet, or better.
One, two...
You said it was one and eight, right?
Five, you're about, you're down about five, five feet from, from, you know, the gutter line of Route twenty there.
Didn't you say the slope on the driveway was one to eight?
It was about, it was about one, one and eight, one and nine, depends on where...
One and eight, twelve and a half percent, so...
Yeah. Before, yeah, most of that driveway is within, is within the right of where, it's not even on our property.
So, entertain a motion to continue to, to the January fourteenth meeting?
I'll make the motion to continue at January fourteenth, second it.
May for the discussion, all those in favor? Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I'm gonna take a two-second break.
Here you go.
January fourteenth is gonna be busy.
Two-minute break.
I'm gonna be sick.
Two minutes, yep, just one more. Two minutes, yep, just one. Requesting site plan approval in this section three point two point five point two and three point two point five point three of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a restaurant using special permit under section three point nine point two point two for drive-through service use Starbucks on property located eight twenty-four Southwood Street, Auburn, Mass, map sixty-six, parcel one forty-eight. Hello again?
Hello, Madam Chair, Todd Broder on behalf of the applicant, and also Pat Doherty from Midpoint Engineering. Just housekeeping, I'm not sure, you had, this is a continued hearing from November, November. I don't remember if Mr. Chambers was sitting at the time, or if Mr. Brooks was, or.
Ronnie was here.
Ronnie was here.
Brooks was here.
He was not.
Mr. Chambers was not.
Okay, so in terms of proceeding with voting members, we would have four.
Yep.
Okay.
And what I'd like to do right off, out of the gate is, Bill, would, could you tell us your thoughts?
I can, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of concerns that were raised at the DCG meeting, um, I think, a couple of months ago, was two, two main things, um, one was the circuitous path, if I could, to get to the drive-through was a concern. So if you come off of Route 12, if you can.
Can you make it a little bit smaller, so Route 12 shows up on the bottom?
Give someone else.
A little bit more.
A little more. Keep going, keep going, there you go.
Yeah, perfect.
Hey, so when you come off of Route 12, heading southbound, some people think it's westbound, but, um, heading for Charlton, you got to take a right, then you come through, and then you pull through the aisle and you move back around. Little awkward movement, not necessarily the worst thing in the world. But that, and then the, the other issue that we had was that traffic exiting. Because this is such a short distance here, one car would probably back up, stop here, waiting for a break. Two cars would, would choke off this entrance. So if somebody who's coming to go into any of these businesses, as we increase this traffic, the likelihood of this potentially backing up increases, which would create potentially stop vehicles on, on Route 12.
On Route 12, yeah.
And so that was raised as an issue, we said at DCG at that point, you know, take a look at it, come back, present something to us, um, never came back to us, and I think just move forward with the original plan. Something that, it is a concern, you know, whether or not they can do something with changing driveway configurations, one-ways, more than one driveway, um, you know, whether or not you'd want something. I know the grade is a little bit of a challenge, so that if they were to come in, it's a straight shot over and around, not weaving through the parking lot. Right now, this is a two-way driveway, um, and this is my biggest concern, is that creates a potential safety issue. I know they have stop bars, but, you know, as someone moves forward, if there's a car here, not everybody obeys stop signs in parking lots, so that's my main concern.
And we, at the last hearing, we, um, asked, you know, to continue so that we could all take a ride up there and, and really see, you know, what's going on. And, um, my feeling is that your assessment, I agree, that that could turn into a cluster pretty quickly and end up out on Route twenty.
If I could respond, um, we did.
Just a minute, please, okay. Um, and I know that Chief Sluckis is not thrilled about this design either. And so I ask, um, Bill stated that they asked her to take another look at a different design. And were you able to do that?
I, I did, and I presented that in the, in the hearing, we didn't. Our original design did not show any circulation improvements. What we have come up with were two things, one was.
The stop.
Was softening this, this turn for the, for the cars going towards, um, the Taco Bell KFC. And right now, the stop bar is, is located here. So people coming in this direction are stopping here, but they're not even stopping, they're going forward. So our, our plan was to move the stop bar back to the edge of the building and include in the stop signs, you know, notation not to block intersection. Um, we also presented the, you know, the production amount of flow and what other businesses are open when, when the peak of the Starbucks are. And there'll be about one car coming in, making a left per minute, and about two cars leaving the site per minute. And if you did go to the site, you'd see that there's.
You did go to the site.
Yeah, there's, there's very, very little traffic at that intersection, it's the existing condition. It's been open for ten years, um, and, you know, our feeling is, is that the morning peak would now reflect what the existing afternoon peak is, when all the businesses are operating. And there has not been a problem, you know, in the ten years it's been operating, we don't feel that there would be a problem going forward.
There hasn't been a coffee drive-through there either, so.
No, but this, this entrance exit is utilized by the Taco Bell KFC traffic as it exits and goes.
And this is a restricted. A restricted curb cut where you only have right turns in, right turns out. It's impossible to make left turns because of the concrete island.
Right, right.
And this was an approved site plan from two thousand and six with a drive-through, it was for a bank. But it was, it was approved drive-through design at that time.
For a bank.
Yeah, for a bank, right, and so we're increasing, we understand. You know, and last time when we were here, we talked about queue lengths a, a lot. We thought that that was the concern of, uh, the police chief, was the queue length. So we provided an exhibit and, and, you know, talked about the ten drive-throughs in town for fast food establishments, and this being the longest drive-through queue before you start to impact a, a street, in this case. You know, Route 12, uh, over four hundred feet, and that's, you know, in excess of twenty cars stacking. I did a little research around, and, you know, the Starbucks, you know, manual for folks that are interested in putting in a Starbucks, you know, essentially around the country, I mean, in there, they always tell you, you know, that you need this many parking spaces, we don't want the building to be such and such a size. Well, their drive-through preferred queue length is eleven cars for the drive-through lane in a seven-car stack. So we're talking about having the capacity anyway to have in excess of twenty cars in the queue. So I don't think the queue length is really an issue. We tried to address Bill's concerns about the, the access there and that, those pinch points. You know, there is, and Pat can probably speak to this, but this, this is a longstanding curb cut. I don't think that we can modify or get a second curb cut to process this drive-through. Uh, so we are, we feel stuck with, with this curb cut. So we tried to make it work with a little bit of signage, with that softening of the curb, curb. You know, if there's another suggestion, we're glad to hear it, but, but really, you know, the, the building's where it is. Obviously, that's not going to change, the only spot for the drive-through is where it's shown now, and we're.
And it's a terrible location.
Through the chair, is there any options, right now it's going to be crisscross pattern. Is there any option of shifting the opening?
I think there's two things, it's, it's a DOT permit, and when they looked at it originally, that's where they wanted the driveway.
Have you gone back to DOT, because you will need a new permit from them?
Uh, we will not be, I don't think we'll need a new permit, we're not, we're not increasing the traffic.
I talked to them today.
We have not, yeah, we haven't, we haven't talked to them, and we certainly will.
Okay, I talked to the permits engineer today. Any change in use, we would issue a new permit.
Okay.
Maybe that would be a good opportunity to discuss, you know, the opening.
You could shift that opening up to the next opening.
No, from the owner, it's, it's probably not going to be economically feasible to, to create a new state DOT curb cut and to, to move it. You know, we, the, the feeling is, is that, you know, with the, with the drive-through that was permitted before, this is where DOT had reviewed and approved it, you know, I know if the, the town had given comments now, you know, maybe they would change their minds, but it's probably not a project if we have to add another curb cut.
Yeah, that was a different use too, at that time, yeah.
It isn't just the traffic coming in here and going this way. Do you think they're going to do this way, they're going to go straight through? I guarantee it, you know, block up here, they're going to back up here, you're going to yell and screaming, you're going to start coming around here.
Starbucks, Starbucks is like habitual users, though, it's like Dunkin', that's right. Once they, once they go through this thing one time, they figure it out. And that's not a, that's not a great answer, but that is reality of how a lot of these things work.
Plus you have the other entrance down the other end from Route twenty, she comes in all the way. That's only one way in, you can't go out that way, unfortunately.
And through the chair, the right turn, where John was pointing, if you have a car stopping, you're probably three, four cars back, can a vehicle make that turn on the inside lane? It's great, is that designed for two lanes?
It is.
What is the, the question?
It's designed for two, because this one is to go.
Right, so right there with that right turn, if you, if you're queued back, you have three or four cars queued around that corner, is a car able to get through that lane?
It's a bypass lane, there's, there's two lanes there, yes.
No, I know, it doesn't, I, I have a, it doesn't look like, what do you have for a radius there, it's pretty tight.
Well, it's a, it's, it's an existing condition, there's two lanes there now.
I know, I just, looking at it, doesn't.
Yeah, I assume tractor trailers actually go through there now.
I drove through it, I, with a truck, I don't see.
You have to be skilled.
Yeah.
Twenty-four feet wide.
It's a very tight radius.
It's, yeah, that's the standard radius on a parking lot, so, twenty-four foot drive-al, twenty-four foot drive-al.
What's this inside radius right here, I'm saying?
Now, that one there is.
I know, this is what I'm talking about, right here, this is queued back here, making this swing right here, looks very difficult.
Yeah, I think that's about a ten-foot radius.
Yeah, ten-foot radius is pretty tight.
That was built according to the site plan for a bypass lane.
Through the chair, just, um, not that you would know offhand, but, um, maybe Bill would know, is this, have we had incidents with traffic backing up as it is without anything there at this point?
Through the chair, nothing aware of, I think maybe a good starting point would be for them to go to Mass DOT with the, and see what their requirements are going to be, whether or not, would they require them to either put in that right turn lane, if you have an eight-foot shoulder wide and four feet, so that there's queuing space? So if they did back up, you're not in a through lane. But I think they should at least talk to Mass DOT, just to make sure that, would they be agreeable to this? Because I, I've seen projects go to the DOT after the plan was approved, and then DOT changes it, and.
You've got to come back, yeah. What would you like to do?
This is the project we're proposing, we can't, we can't go over to DOT and make changes to the curb cut, make a new one.
You have to go to DOT to get a new permit.
Right, we would.
Right, but we're not, this isn't going to be a total redesign, I think it was just not available for this project, so. But we're not going to withdraw one.
We obviously understand we would need to go to the, the DOT, and it's kind of the chicken and the egg type of a thing. You know, the town has their process, and the DOT has their process, and you need to finish both before you could, you could, could receive a, a building permit, so, you know, this is, be the first step here. If the DOT said, no, you have to put in a turning lane, or you have to move, move the curb cut, you know, we would either decide if the project's going to move forward there, and if there were changes to this plan, we represent them to the, to the town.
So you don't want to withdraw, you want us to take a vote tonight, okay?
If, if there's additional information that you're requesting, you know, but for, you know, a total redesign, we would certainly consider, we don't want to put anyone on the spot, we're just, you know, our office is moving, we've got a tenant that's, that's excited to come here. You know, but for the, the drive-through use, you know, a new tenant could occupy this space that has more traffic. You know, and I know it would never drive through with a turning radius. You know, there, there are other approved uses that, that have a lot more traffic than a Starbucks does, and a lot more traffic at the same time as the, the development experiences their traffic, you know, in the evening with the restaurants. Um, we felt that, you know, using, or having a Starbucks here with their peak demand or their peak traffic occurring when the other businesses aren't even open, was, was the, the best, best use we could have in there.
Any public comment? Bill, did you have something you wanted to add?
Through the chair, the only reason I suggest talking to Mass DOT, because if you have the traffic engineers look at it, potentially they would, they may come back and say, we're okay with as proposed. I think the more people looking at it, and, you know, that have the experience working with access to the highway, I don't think it would, would hurt your cause. If they come back and say, you need to move it or turning lane, well, they're going to come back and say that either way. I think that's something you should find out, because they may come back and say, we're comfortable with it as proposed.
But I'm not hearing from the board that even if we do that, we're going to come back here and receive an approval for the project.
I think if you can make it work, it's too crazy right now, there's too many pinch points, the, um, if that, if that opening could be made to go straight up and through? I mean.
Right, I guess what, I thought, I thought what Bill just said was, if we go to DOT and show them this, and they say, okay, we're, we're fine with this, even with a coffee shop use.
Those pinch points, I.
That's my thing.
Yeah.
That, so the conversation with DOT is proving what, what, if we're not willing to or able to, for variety of reasons.
Make any changes, yeah, yeah, I see.
Because we also have existing tenants with certain lease rights.
Certain input and rights.
Any changes to parking spaces that, you know, affects the leases. And, but, you know, the, the reason we didn't propose that and why we, you know, came forward with this is because it works. You know, there's a perception that it may not, but it, it works, I've, I've, my office has been there for the last ten years. I've, I've never seen three cars stacking out there. And yeah, there isn't a, a restaurant there now in the morning, but, you know, I, I see a lot of, you know, a lot of uses that are, that are, that are having their peaks when, you know, Route twelve, twelve-twenty westbound is, is experiencing their greatest traffic, and there hasn't been a problem, I've never had a problem leaving that curb pit. I've never been at the curb pit while I was waiting for someone else to leave. And so from my experience and from the tenant that we're using, with their, their peak traffic being, you know, opposite of the rest of the buildings, we felt this, this is the best way to go.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, yeah, I, I think that, that does hold some, you know, some weight to the project in general. I mean, the peak hours are different if there aren't that same, those same issues with the other restaurants. And I mean, I know there's multiple entrance for, you know, the Taco Bell to come in and out, but I feel like those issues would still happen during their peak hours, that would happen with or without this. If they have. Yeah, I mean, with, with that Taco Bell and Chili's having the same, relatively same hours, lunch schedules, that sort of thing, like, we would see those issues, so maybe, you know, if it was one of those things where DOT said, yeah, we haven't had, we don't have statistics that would mirror that there's been issues there, right? Then I think that kind of answers that question for us, at that point, I kind of feel more comfortable.
Going to Taco Bell, you come in and make a right and just head down. You're not making a right off the highway, then making a left, then making a right, then making another right. It's totally different.
Yeah, but exiting, but if you're exiting the same way, if you're on your way that back that way. And the people are entering for Applebee's.
Chili's.
Chili's, sorry.
Chili's.
But I mean, I, I would assume that, like, if you come in.
Chili's doesn't exit out the back as well.
So do they.
Not really.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
If they go straight.
It's not as apparent to that building as it is to Chili's.
I'd tell you that, that a lot of people use that.
I use that back one. I, I appreciate everyone's positions for or against this, I understand them. But I really do feel that, first of all, with the, with the queue lines, I thought there was a lot of different, this is very different than the last one we looked at, I did go out to the property, and I thought the queue lines were fine. The, the fact that we're only going one way and there's not traffic going both ways, I think alleviates a lot of the pinch point concerns, because people are just going to, they're going to come out, and I did sit there for a little bit, I didn't see any kind of, any kind of pinch points over there by the stop signs. And where it's off, off hours, I, I, I don't see any problems with this project, I just don't.
Through the chair, just clarification, Scott, when you say one way.
Yes, my question.
They can't, you can't take a left here.
Okay, so two-way, it's entrance and exit, okay.
Well, I mean.
I thought you meant the driveway is a one-way.
People coming out on the twenty.
Right turn and a left.
To right turn and a left, correct, okay, I just wanted to clarify. To right turn and right, correct, okay. I just wanted clarification, okay.
I just think that slows up traffic a lot when people are trying to go across. And I think that's what, on the project.
And through the chair, just with Bill and John's comment, how do you prevent people from going straight in?
You can't.
You don't.
It's gonna work about as good as the exit on Warren Road for O'Reilly's. Do not enter Mercy Vehicles.
But I mean, if you, if you stripe that white, dude, I mean, it's pretty, I mean, you see.
Parking normally. No. People are gonna do it.
Yeah.
Will it continue? Probably.
Time to close it.
I just don't look at the projects that way, because people are gonna break a law.
I'm trying to understand, you know, the, the comments a little bit, and I, I think, you know, what, and what Pat and I just talked about is, you know, we, we can go to DOT and talk to them about this plan, but, and, and, you know, maybe there's a small tweak to this plan in terms of, you know, a, a swing on the curb or something, you know, whatever that may be, something sort of minor, but essentially utilizing this curb cut. The same traffic pattern, though, that's, that's what we'd be willing to talk to DOT about and get an answer on, whether they thought that was acceptable. Again, I'm just hearing, I think that, that's not necessarily acceptable to the board. If, if that is true, then.
You don't wanna waste your time going to DOT.
We do not, and we would just, you know, close the public hearing, and I understand you would vote, and deal with that.
And I, you know, do, you know, the record from the original approvals, there was a lot of discussion on where this curb cut would be, and the fact that there wouldn't be one. And, you know, there was a large expense on site improvements to put this curb cut where it is as well, that was driven, you know, by the comments, from this owner. You know, which also should be, be considered.
I just, you know, once this is Pandora's box, and once this is out, it's the same kind of thing as.
Here's my question.
Yep. We have no.
All things are great. You say it's gonna work, and then it doesn't. Then what do we do? That's my concern.
I'd love to hear the rest of Wendy's comment, I'm not really sure where she was headed with it, but.
He just summed it up succinctly.
Pandora's box.
Yeah.
Is this about queue length, or is this about the site?
It's about queue length, it's about pinch points, it's about Route 20 backing up, you know, traffic up onto Route 20. I think Bill made a great point with, with this area here. Even though I, I thought that was, you know, brilliant, bring that back, bring that back, you know what's gonna happen, and it's gonna.
That would disagree, we don't know that that's gonna happen.
Well, okay.
I guess, I guess my only, my, my last comment is on, on queue length. You know, Auburn doesn't have a provision that talks about minimum queue lengths. A lot of towns.
We may.
A lot of towns do, some still don't. I did a perusal of a lot of the Massachusetts towns, sort of locally. A lot of the local ones don't have queue lengths. Worcester has one, and it's, it's, it comes up all the time. Their drive-through for a coffee shop, minimum queue length is 240 feet. We're showing 400-plus, you know, feet of queue length capacity. I mean, the way they measure queue length may be, may be different, but.
I really don't think it's the queue length that's bothering everybody, Todd, I think it's, because you're coming out of here, you got people coming in here, they have to make a left and go upright, go around to your queue line. Now you got people coming out of here, they gotta make it over here. Well, this guy's trying to make a left to go this way. That's, that's the biggest pinch point, it's right here. That's the biggest problem.
If we moved it the other way, we'd hear the new print.
The length of your queues, I think is plenty big enough. It's, it's this area right here that's, given me heartburn.
The drive-through servicing materials and information that anybody could access on, on the World Wide Interweb for Starbucks tells you, they, they tells you what their service time is per customer, and how many customers they essentially release from that drive-through. It, it's not like going through a toll booth on the Mass Turnpike, right? It is, you know, you go, you get processed, you pay, you sit there and wait for your, you drink, then you get it, and then you drive off. They strive for a certain parameters, but it's not like they're releasing, you know, 10 cars a minute, or something to that effect. So the, the pinch point here would be how many cars can get out onto Route 12 in the time that people are emptying out of the drive-through.
That's exactly it. Is, is this pinch point so bad that it would, that cars would back up somewhere cars couldn't get in? I don't think the queue length is anything to do with it. That's where I was confused initially, too.
It's not just the people coming in to take a left to go around to the queue, and the people coming out of Starbucks. It's the people that want to come in and take a right. You think everybody's gonna stay on the right-hand side of that road? Not happening.
They want to come in and go this way?
Yeah. And you got a guy coming out of the stop for the, from Starbucks, takes the wide left turn, or wide right turn, but he's way to the left side.
I think if, if you've been to the site, you know that there's not a, this isn't a large.
I've been there, I was up there for an hour last night.
If you saw, there's maybe one car going out to that curb cut a minute. And what we're talking about with the Starbucks is, is about two cars to that curb cut every minute during their peak.
If they're really good.
And less, less than that during most of the day. You know, so we, we talk about a pinch point, and we had, in the original presentation, we had made, you know, if there's a car here who would take three cars to totally block this intersection, there's a stop light right here that provides plenty of gaps. There's no people here waiting to make a left-hand turn.
Correct.
Everyone has a free right-hand turn as soon as, as soon as there's either no one in this lane, or the light turns red. So it's, it's a very small generating property as it is. There's, as, as Attorney Broderick had mentioned, you know, the, the, the drive-through window itself is metering cars from the drive-through, it's about 45 seconds to, to make that transaction. You know, it's, it's a perceived pinch point by looking at it from the bird's eye, but, you know, we don't feel it's gonna operate that way. And, you know, that's, that's been our, our contention all.
Again, my question, whatever it does, then what do we do?
Well, I mean, looking at the, the facts that we have, is, is a metered, metered number of vehicles leaving. Existing traffic on the site, it won't happen. You know, I, I guess it's still gonna answer the question. The, the question is, what if it does? How do we, how do we mitigate the problem if it does create a problem? All I'm hearing is, it's not gonna happen. Well, that, that could happen on, on any site. You know, if it were a public safety issue, it would be shut down. You know, or, or police details would be required.
You would think that, but Dunkin' Donuts is still running pretty strong downtown, it's Alfred Street. And they create a massive backup.
And this is not that, that site, that's.
No, I understand.
They, you can go left, and you can go right. It's, Dunkin' Donuts is a different tenant, they, they have a lot more transactions, but they're quicker transactions, they have more coffee, quick, quick coffees. You know, looking at this.
Dunkin's quicker than Pumpeyo's.
I was gonna say Starbucks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we gotta look at this project we're presenting here, in.
And, and John, I feel that we, we could say, well, any project, what if, I mean, what's the likelihood? And on this project, I just see it's uniquely different than the other ones that are proposed, and then the House Street, that we do have the buffer, the space, and I don't think queue times will, or the, I don't think that pinch point will be as bad as we think.
Through the chair, I think there's some hearing from, from Todd, from the engineer, that he could indicate it, two cars in a minute, the numbers that I think Todd mentioned.
Two cars in a minute is them really rushing you through the drive-through.
So that's one car in 30 seconds, right?
Right.
The two cars I was mentioning, one would be from the drive-through, and another from, from, it's about 50%.
So two cars coming in, most people are gonna come across here, and probably come in at an angle. So I think two cars theoretically could block that, because they're not gonna square off.
They're not gonna wait a full minute at that drive-through.
Right, but my, I guess where I'm going with it is that you have a traffic light just to the east of this location, where your green cycle is more than 30 seconds. Okay, your green, green time is probably, I would say it's probably a minute or more. So you have platoons of traffic, so it's gonna be hard for cars to go.
It's hard there today, you can make that argument, but it works. There's not a problem, there's not that much.
Going, going westbound out of, out of Auburn in the preliminary, primarily the morning hours?
Right, I'm just saying, you know, looking at that, if you're.
Traffic's coming inbound, not outbound.
Depending on what your gaps are, if cars are moving along at 40, 50 miles an hour, and you have steady flow of traffic during that green cycle, I'm not so sure that people are gonna be going until the light turns red and creates that gap. So I mean, those are the kind of things you really should be looking at, because once you go a green cycle a minute long, and the cars are continuously traveling westbound, I'm not so sure that someone's gonna pull out in front of that traffic to go, nor, nor would we want them to. So when you wait for that light to turn red, and now you have the other lane go, but there is a gap, for a short dis, short timeframe that you could potentially go.
As far as a busy place, and be a certain distance from a traffic light, try to get out of PJ's gas station. It's a freaking nightmare.
And you've got a lot more traffic there.
How do I have more traffic there than I do further on Route 20?
You've got 16 pumps there, and it's.
Oh, I'm talking about the cars in the parking lot, I'm talking about getting on the highway. You can't get out. You have to wait for that full light cycle to stop to red. And if you blink your ride, they're coming out of the parking lot, you still can't get out from, from home deep.
Through the chair, just comparison of traffic volumes, on 1220, there's about 30,000 cars per day in this section, and I, the other areas probably decreased to 20-something thousand. So, because this is an overlap of 12 and 20, there's more traffic here than there is on 20 or 12, because this is 1220 overlap.
Makes sense. Nick, final, final statement? Did you have something else you wanted to say?
I wanted to know if they, if they thought about softening, instead of pushing this back, if they had softened this one to meet here where they're not stopping across flow of traffic. If they soften this up, then the people exiting are lined up and ready to go out when it's free, instead of cutting a corner, or coming back here. And I don't know if there was ever consideration to having this, you know, back up a little bit, soften that, and then when you're backing up, you're actually backing up into the queue, which we, I think, have established is more than what we would normally get. So then your backup's in the parking lot, and not backing up into the street.
And I think they've both said that this is the design.
You know, I, you know, a tweak like that is something that we would certainly, you know, that's a minor tweak to the, the site plan, it's not a major curb cut move. Our feeling was this, you know, we would certainly entertain that if the, the board wanted, you know, the, the metered flow out of the drive-through, we didn't feel was, was going to be the, you know, the, the, the primary movement we wanted to design for. You know, it's, you know, just to tee it up. If, if, if that's the feel of the commission, we could certainly take a look at that. But our, our feeling was that the drive-through would be less prioritized.
Through the chair, and I, I don't know the answer to this question, is a small island here a possibility, a possibility to stop cross-traffic, when people are just driving straight across?
You know, certainly, and then, you know, we, we would, you know, work with that with the DOT as well. You know, you know, we're striping, or, or something to more reinforce the.
Correct, just.
The, the hardware.
You could put an island in the middle of that.
Yeah.
With that satisfied, concerns.
Just stop that crossing, and, and soften that, bring that back. What do you think about that, Bill?
I'd have to see it on paper. See how it would work.
I guess that would prevent somebody from just, like, darting straight across, which I think would be the pinch point, right?
Just.
If you're in a state property, then DOT would have to approve that island, I would think, but.
Yeah, I mean, my initial thoughts on the island is, I'm not sure that you can extend it back far enough to make that really change, be significant. The rounding, as Steve mentioned, that would pull it back far enough, maybe that might accomplish something.
If your work was entirely on their property.
You know, you'd really have to see it, because even the island, the impact fitness, we had an island, and, you know, the people run over that island all day long, and take out the sign, so, because it's a high-street road. I'm not sure, again, that island, the length of it, wouldn't be long enough to change people, because you'd still have to take a left after you come through.
Right.
So you wouldn't be able to extend it far enough to make a difference.
But the, the way this island is drawn here now, I don't understand, is, by doing this, you no longer have a bypass lane, where you have 20, 24 feet here.
Well, you've got the bi-part, and then they merge together into a single lane.
The bypass only has to exist until the point of service, just past the point of service.
So, again, if you have a car here, somebody goes through, gets sick of wait, goes to the bypass lane. Now he's gotta wait for the car that just came out.
Right, just, yeah, that, you know, you, why do we, yeah, but why do you need to merge it into to one?
So instead of two cars coming out, there's only one?
Yeah, yeah, you're just kinda controlling the traffic a little bit, you know.
So you wouldn't have two cars looking to both take a right, right turn.
So when I mentioned soften, it's more to try to align it better with the existing curb cut?
Yeah, we would still come down into one.
Yes.
We would probably.
Then if you did that, you're doing, you're effectively creating, you're coming across now this bypass lane, so.
But the bypass merges.
Bypass lane would merge with it.
It merges after the window.
Or go this way?
Yeah.
I know what they're saying. By doing that, it, it leaves a pinch point of two cars trying to come up, instead of just one.
Right.
And that, that's how it would be. And I, I think the existing, or the stuff that they moved back, I think gets moved forward, and they have the traffic.
Yeah.
We can play with that piece of the, you know, the site, I think the curb cut's the tougher part.
But speaking of bypasses, and where do the supplies come in?
It's during the off, off-peak hours, you know, during the middle of the day, they're using that, that drive-through bypass lane.
So you got a, does it come in, I don't know if it comes in trailer trucks or box trucks, Dunkin' Donuts comes in trailer trucks. I don't know what Starbucks uses.
I think they use the, I think they're.
Trailer trucks?
I think they're longer box, box trucks.
All right, I think enough is enough. So do you want to try this again?
It sounds like, you know, you have the flexibility to work a little bit on that area past the point of service there, but that's really gonna be the area that you'd see a change, so.
Continue?
If, if, you know, I guess, if the feeling is, is that if we can get something to work out in that area, it, it'll go forward, you know, otherwise, we don't wanna, you know, waste everyone's time, I guess, continuing.
Maybe running, we could go back M2. Yeah, four of us. How do you feel, guys?
Think I'm medical.
Soften it up.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, it's good for me as it is if you wanted to move that back to make it good for everyone, I'm cooked that, too.
And put a, some kind of a, but it would have to be more than something they could run over, it would have to be something.
What do you mean, in terms of the curb cut, an island of the curb cut?
Yeah, the island in between that.
I think Bill's right, you have to extend that all the way to almost the peak of this peninsula here, which is gonna start blocking.
Just food for thought, that might actually make things work.
Yeah, if you're gonna soften it in there, I don't know.
You paint one in.
Well, it's maybe the best idea, I guess.
You can stripe one in.
Yeah.
And through the chair, the ideal solution to me, and I probably not wanting to do it, would be to put in, there's already an eight-foot shoulder, I think, out there, to widen that four feet, and put a turning lane in, so this area for people to back up, so they're backed up into the through traffic.
So where, where would you like to see that, Bill?
Be a right-hand turn lane.
On Route 12.
There's already a eight-foot shoulder out here.
Yep.
You widen four feet in here, and just give them a turn lane.
Yeah, I can say that the grades probably wouldn't work out, and I'd also mention that DOT just reconstructed that whole intersection.
It would let you shortcut it.
But for the extra one or two vehicles, I don't know what would justify a D cell lane, and then, a D cell lane, you're getting very close to the, you know, that turnaround, so, so geometrically, it probably doesn't work. This development was, was required to put in a D cell lane before. The DOT took that away.
It's a tough site.
It is.
I think the perception isn't really, you know, it works well now, and that's, that's the point we, we make.
But I think the concern is, if it becomes a problem, then what recourse is the top?
Nothing, nothing we can do. All right, so, continue?
We'll try again.
See you on January 14th. Motion to continue?
Make the motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye. C Board's holder, request for extension, 476 Lester Street.
No idea.
Issue to Bill? CMIPC. Hi, how are you?
Hey, good evening.
Please introduce yourself again. Please introduce yourself again.
Pedro Rodriguez from C. Board Solar. We are the property owners and also the owners of the project. We got the approvals in May 2018. We also got the special permit in December 2017. So we are on the agenda with the CBA next week to extend the special permits. And I was hoping to extend the special permits. And this is because of the cluster study in National Grid, and they just pulled all the solar projects in this area, the studies they're doing. Yeah. So I'm sure you guys are aware of what happened, is that ICSN England, that pretty much operates the distribution lines, they pretty much hold up all the projects that were part of this SMAP program to run a study that had lasted over a year. We expect it to be done this year, but our construction is going to be delayed until it's completed. So for that reason, I was hoping to extend the permit for at least a year, in case we're not able to start before May next year.
Any comments on that?
National Grid is holding up everything.
Everything.
Pretty much indefinitely, so.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, motion to extend.
Motion to extend, a motion to extend one year?
Yeah, for one year from, it's out in May of 2018.
From May of when?
From May of 2020.
2020. He's premature, but he's trying to stay ahead of us, which I think is good.
Oh, just one question. Would have to, if National Grid does disturbing, we don't need you.
No, I mean, the project is already in the SMAP program. We already got the preliminary cost that increase on the connection. If the project is still feasible, we're going to move forward. We just have to wait for National Grid, or ICSN England to finish the entire story of all the projects. So we pretty much are ahead of the curve, but we have to wait for the other ones to complete. And just in fact, I think we have, I'm sure you guys know, we pulled the permit, we renovated the bridge, and I'm meeting the inspector tomorrow to get the CO, so. We're moving forward, just have to wait for him.
If it happens before, then notification's given before you start construction?
Oh, no, of course not.
Make a motion to continue to May 2021?
Extend.
Extend.
Extend the decision.
Your second?
For all five lots.
For all five lots.
Great. Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least, please...
All my time for 30 seconds.
Complete streets, I know. CMR PC. Hi.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hwami Tran. I'm an associate transportation planner with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. And I've been working with Bill, Joanna, and Adam over the past eight to nine months or so on Town's Complete Streets Tier Two Planization Plan. There is a web link that I just wanted to open up now before I go.
Lock.
Hello.
Lock.
Oh.
Sure.
Keep clicking on it. She should shut off the computer at this point, Tim.
I know, why is it still up?
Twice hit my computer, restarted while I was on call.
So is it only the areas that actually had sidewalks that were evaluated?
So when we did our data collection, we collected data on all federal aid eligible roads and local roads. So we looked at where sidewalks currently exist. And we also checked for gaps in the pedestrian network as well, to see where new sidewalk construction could be made. So, yeah, like I said, we worked with DPW and Planning on the Town's Tier Two Complete Streets Plan. And the plan, the program is actually broken up into three tiers. So I'll just quickly overview that background. The Tier One phase, which is the Complete Streets policy and training, was passed by...
February 2018.
Yes, was passed by the selectmen in February 2018. And this policy demonstrates the community's commitment to implementing Complete Streets approaches wherever possible and where it makes sense. So making roadways safer and accessible for all modes of transportation and being thoughtful about it. So not putting bike lanes everywhere, but, you know, considering where bicycle activity is happening, where pedestrians are traveling, and making those accommodations to help them travel safer and better. And the second tier, which is the phase that we're currently in right now, is the prioritization plan. And this is a combination of data collection and developing the spreadsheet of proposed construction projects. So with the data collection, we did extensive sidewalk collection using iPads, and we digitized that into an online mapping dashboard for you guys to take a look at. And at this time, we were also working with Adam on the Town's Master Plan. Our staff had drafted the Transportation Chapter, so we were able to take the Master Plan survey results and to take a look at what the residents were, the residents were asking for in terms of more sidewalks or where they needed better connections. So we took those responses and included it as part of our research. So with that, okay, so the data collection, as I said, it occurred this past summer across the entire town where sidewalks currently exist. And we had catalogued and graded sidewalk and ADA conditions on a scale of excellent, good, fair, and poor. We also looked at crosswalk locations as well as shoulder width. And... So this is just to give you some insight into kind of the various conditions that we're looking for. Obviously, the poor sidewalk is deteriorated and, you know, no ramps, poor ramp where they don't have the detectable warning pads. Compliant ramps that we're looking for are those ramps that have that padding. So this is actually something new that we've done typically with our Complete Streets process. We bring the huge table maps and we ask folks to draw on them and we lay out all the Complete Streets lines. But this time around, this is actually our first online mapping dashboard that we did. And we took the data collection. So we took all of our data collection findings and we put it on this dashboard here, which is publicly available. And we hope that you can put it on your website or somewhere where the whole community can take a look at it. But you can use the following items over here in the side panel to look at conditions by street. So the green is the good, yellow is fair. And you can also view the data based on the conditions themselves. So if you want to just take a look at the roads that have, the sidewalks that have poor conditions, those will filter. So you can play around with it. We also took a look at sidewalk obstructions. It's hidden by default, but if you wanted to show, so the various obstructions are like mailboxes, utility poles, things of that nature. And crosswalk locations, you have to zoom in pretty closely to see that because they're very, very small lines. And with the Complete Streets projects, we did add that as a layer on this dashboard. So you are able to see just town-wide where the Complete Streets projects that we're proposing for. So just in a nutshell, this is summary of the sidewalk conditions that we came across in town. So generally, we discovered about 35, 36% of excellent sidewalks with poor. There is about 9%, so this is significant cracking, crumbling, missing sections. And same type of display for ADA ramp conditions. So generally, there are about 192 ramps, no ramps in town, crosswalks without ramps. And...
That's wild.
So, yes, this is for you to play with, but I just wanted to give you a quick demonstration of it. So...
Hold on, can I ask a question through the chair?
Yes.
How many crosswalks have you come up with total? Do you have a total number?
Not off the top of my head. I'd have to, I think it's on there, actually.
We'll just, because the town has a ton of crosswalks.
Crosswalks, 145.
Total?
Yes, total, from what we gathered.
Okay.
And in terms of sidewalk miles...
Because you have to paint those, they're painting your...
Yeah.
So in terms of sidewalk miles, about 56 miles of sidewalks and ramps in total, 820. So...
Now, did it focus mainly, it looks like it focused mainly around the schools. Is that a fair...
I think you...
Yeah, so interestingly, Auburn, there are, are you familiar with the Safe Roots Program through Mastot? So there are three schools in town, the Bryn Mawr School, I think Auburn Middle, and...
Pacha.
I can never say it. Which are partner schools through Safe Roots. And as a partner school, you're eligible for infrastructure funding, which is similar type of construction projects within a two-mile radius of the school. So having that in our back pocket, we wanted to make sure that the projects that were listed were projects around school for school access.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense.
So hypothetically, if you were, you know, you could go, use this tool and find out what are the safest places of where to walk where it's eligible for sidewalks, that sort of thing, right?
Yes, yes. And I did forget to mention too, so on the dashboard, we made a tab right next to the map tab, to the bottom of eligible Complete Streets infrastructure, which I do have paper handouts if you'd like. But these are what Mastot lists as their eligible projects when you apply for that Complete Streets funding.
Quite a lot of different things to choose from.
Anyone in town could access this, right?
Not yet, but it's not that happen.
Not yet, but we would encourage it, just because it is a nice public engagement tool for future planning as well, not just with Complete Streets.
You know, you can see applications for when you're, you know, setting up your bus stop for picking up kids and those kinds of things being part of this. It has a lot of uses, but that's one that jumps out at me.
It's really cool.
Does it need feedback from the...
And it helps you, Bill, right? Because you, you know, you'll have the data.
Right, absolutely. I mean, you have a general idea, you know, where our sidewalks are poor and that a lot of the sidewalks, you know, 10 years ago, very few of the sidewalks were getting reconstructed just because the town didn't have the funds to do that. So they would do the road, but leave the sidewalk. But in the past, let's say 10 years, whenever we reconstruct a roadway, we do the sidewalks too. So there's a lot of catch-up to do.
Sure.
Wheelchair ramps, as Hwami mentioned, there's a ton of crosswalks out there that don't have wheelchair ramps. At some point, the town put crosswalks everywhere. Someone must have called and said, "Can I have a crosswalk?" And they went out and painted it. Might go to grass, might go to a driveway. So to change all those, you know, is very difficult to even go back and say, "Well, this crosswalk shouldn't be here." Very difficult to go undo that now. So I think with Complete Streets, it's going to help us with, you know, fixing some of the problems.
Identifying some of those things.
Identifying them and also going forward and try to improve them. And then funding eligibility, I think, is probably the next thing, tool and one we can actually move forward and request projects.
Yeah, so with the Tier Three funding, that deadline, they have two rounds of deadlines. So the first round is May 1st, and then the following, that is October 1st. So if you don't feel ready for May 1st, there's still an opportunity in the fall. So using the data that we gathered and we developed with DPW and Planning on the proposed list of construction projects. And Mastot requires you to have a minimum of 15 projects, but there is no limit really. And on this spreadsheet, which I believe you do have copies of, it lists the project name, the project ranking, as well as if it, if the project intersects with environmental justice population, Mastot scores those projects up higher because of the need for those populations. There's also a timeline, so there is anticipated construction schedule as well as a cost estimate. So we're finalizing this spreadsheet to include the cost estimate. So you currently do not have those on your spreadsheet, but we're working on those right now within the next week to estimate those costs. So just in summary, some of the proposed projects are a town-wide ramp compliance, as Phil mentioned. And when we were talking with DPW, there was some thought of maybe phasing that out because, you know, a lot of just those, all those ramps in one brush of Complete Streets that might be aggressive, so maybe prioritizing, prioritizing areas that do not have ramps and then areas that just need the detectable warning pad or something. And then another example is upwind street sidewalk construction. We also proposed a shared use path around the Bryn Mawr School. And so when this spreadsheet is in final draft mode, we would work with the town to submit it to Mastot through their website portal. And they review it for completeness, but they don't score it. So typically, what they'll do is they'll kick it back within, I'd say, three weeks with some edits and corrections to be made.
Was there opportunity to take the ADA buffers that are currently, travel along with the bus that travels through town and look at that as well? Because by making those areas more accessible in that ADA buffer, would eliminate the need for the, you know, paratransit transportation, which is a much more expensive transportation to provide.
Right.
And that could be helpful information as well. Because then you're, you know, you're increasing accessibility to public transportation.
Yeah, let me look into that as well.
Because you guys have all the buffers for the bus routes.
Right.
So it, you know, could make sense to take a look at that, particularly when you're looking at, you know, the ramps. Because it's, that's that kind of impediment to people in wheelchairs and vision impairment. So that might, you know, be something else to look out to.
Absolutely.
Well, this is great work.
Nice job.
So, yeah, Tier Three, as I mentioned, you would select projects from this spreadsheet. And I was at the Mastot conference in September, and they were just kind of in summary reflecting on all of the projects they have funded. And they really like to see projects that improve school access, promote healthy aging, so projects that, you know, help with elderly populations and mobility and equity as well. So, and just looking at the population in Auburn, there is a presence of older populations. So I think you do have some great projects on there with a good chance. So, yep, as I said, the draft plan is in place. Our next steps are to submit the plan for Mastot for review. So I do encourage you to take a look at the draft that we have so far. If there's any additional projects that you'd like or any just changes or questions, please let me know or let them know. So we will work with the town to submit the project by end of December. Our contract right now is December 31st. So as soon as we have those final project costs in over the next week, we'll work with the town to review that and finalize it and submit it for funding.
Great.
Do you know what the town's commitment is? Is it a percentage of the projects or...
So for the Tier Three funding, so...
Does it match?
Not to my knowledge, but...
No match.
But to my understanding, some, I guess, kind of what's been holding some towns back is you need to have a design in place for the projects you apply for. And a lot of towns don't have the engineering capacity in-house. and a lot of towns don't have the engineering capacity in-house, but with Auburn, we do. So I think that would give you a leg up and funding.
Even better. Terrific. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
So you do have that web link, so if you have, throw it out.
And your email information is on here?
Yes, yes, page there, my contact information, please let me know.
Well, our hour is committed to, how many more meetings do we need to attend?
All right, I think we're good for today.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.